November fourteenth, reminding everyone that the meeting is being broadcast and recorded. So first on our agenda tonight, after the call to order, which we'll just consider that, is the Clerk's report. Kate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've received one correspondence since the last Planning Board meeting. I do think it may be something that has to be put on the agenda for the next meeting. That was about a resident writing in about tree cutting on a scenic road, unless there's been plenty of information otherwise.
I think Peter has some information on that.
So I can speak to that. So today, I think the Planning Board knows, a comment came in or an email came in. Also, please know that was followed up with a public records request by Mr. Steve Morgan. Today, myself and Becca Solomon, our conservation agent, were trying to track down what happened, and it came back that Eversource on Tuesday night, which was a very windy night, a piece of a branch fell onto a live power line. So Eversource was called out, and actually, it was a primary voltage electric wire. And so therefore, Tuesday night, the windy night, Eversource did go out, and they did remove the branch that was leaning on the primary electrical wire. Power did have to be shut off through a section of Concord Street, just because that was a live wire. They did finish up their work. Obviously, due to the darkness now, there was a Ashland police officer with their lights on. So furthermore, there was a situation. It was a safety concern. We followed up with Eversource. Our conservation agent, who was also our tree warden, in Alvaro, actually ground-truthed the location today, they concluded that the tree was actually on private property, and it was not in the road right away. And then further, they concluded that it was a safety matter that was dealt with correctly from all sources. And so, we did go through it. We did follow up on it, and Mr. Morgan's public records request will be followed up with in a timely manner.
So is someone responding to him or call him, or how is that like?
We'll put an email together. This all was a fluid, obviously a fluid conversation today, but I can just kind of tell you tonight that that was the outcome.
No, I'm sure appreciate the follow-up. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is public comment. I'll let you manage that, Peter.
So right now, it's a time for a public comment, both in the room and on Zoom. If you have any public comment, this would be appropriate time to make your way to the microphone. And/or if you are on Zoom, if you have a public comment, please raise your hand. At this current time, there is nobody in the room with a public comment, and seen none on Zoom.
Is this a comment just about what you just discussed?
Nope. It's a comment about anything tonight.
But if you, but wait a second. If you have a comment about something that we're actually, that's on our agenda, if you've come, then you might want to wait. We will have public comment about those agenda items. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So no one else in the room, and right now, we have nobody else, no one else has their hand up online.
All right, then we will move on to our next agenda item, and that is 100 Chestnut Street, the Asher Development. Peter, what are we talking about tonight?
Tonight, we have Mr. Roy McDowell, who is the developer of 100 Chestnut Street. Part of the Planning Board's decision going back to 2022, excuse me, required, I believe it was condition number sixteen, required that the applicant come and propose actually the signage. And so with this, you will see in your packets that the signage is here, and it's on two sheets of paper. Secondly, there's an email from Doug Scott, building commissioner. Doug Scott is a building commissioner, who, as building commissioner, reviews all sign permits. And it just says that he has reviewed the sign, and I can read verbatim, Doug, the Planning Board, well, that was my question. I just say, hey Doug, I said, Doug, the Planning Board tonight, we're reviewing the attached signage, which is here, of the current project of the Asher, which is under construction at 100 Chestnut Street, as discussed. As you all know, the Planning Board's special permit and the site plan review decision requires that the Planning Board to review the signage, which will be done. This was on the prior meeting's agenda, and then it was moved due to a scheduling conflict. So with that said, Doug, on October 24th, responds, and he says, "I have reviewed the proposed signage, and I have no issues with it," period. And so tonight, Mr. Roy McDowell is here to go over and to ask any questions from the Planning Board may have on the proposed signage. So at this point, Mr. Roy McDowell, do you have anything to add, and/or would like to discuss with the Planning Board? And if you do, can you please make your way to the microphone?
I have it here.
Nope, I got it.
Now, you'll notice that there's a sign on the corner.
Can you just get to the microphone? I'm sorry.
You'll notice in the plan, we have a sign on the corner of Queen Isabella, and we actually changed that a little bit. We actually had to discuss with some of the neighbors, because some of them saw that sign, and they think, "Oh, the Queen Isabella," and that's not what we want them to do.
Oh, I'm sorry. So repeating about the sign on the corner of Queen Isabella, you'll notice we've given you two copies of the sign. One has an arrow. And the concept of this is, of coming up Chestnut, you'll see the sign, you'll see the arrow, so you'll continue on Chestnut to the next sign, which will bring you in the entrance. And then there's one other small signage over the front door. There's actually a rendering that shows the sign on the corner, if you have that.
I don't, I don't think there's a, is that the rendering you mean?
I have a few copies.
Oh, yeah, there's some, those are some.
Just wanted to give, I wanted to give you a visual sense of what the corner would look like. So the whole intention is to drive traffic to the front, not on the neighbor's side streets. And just, I also have, if you would like, we went and looked at some other properties in town, just to give a sense of scale and proportionality. So I have three other projects that I will give you, that the lettering on our sign is actually smaller, and the general scope and scale is somewhat less as well. So as Peter mentioned, we had met with a building inspector. We've looked at this with our architects, and we feel it's tastefully done in scale and scope of what we feel is appropriate for the project.
I have a question.
Sure.
What is this note referring to illumination, appropriate illumination? What is the illumination?
It's interiorly lit. So at night, where you see white would be interiorly lit. So there won't be any harsh light from the ground or anything such as that?
But is the same, is this supposed to represent the same sign? I mean, this one is kind of gray.
Oh, no, one's showing it, one, the one that's dark is showing it at night.
Oh, okay.
But it's never at an angle like that. That's just like, like supposed to be a perspective? Is that right?
Yeah, I was wondering. It's like, or maybe it's the graphic in the paper that has like a shadow line, I assume, as part of the sign.
Yes, correct.
As part of the sign?
Yes.
I mean, I don't have really any issues with the large sign. I have to say, I didn't actually notice the arrow at first, but you know, that it was, because it's thin relative to the rest, but, but I don't see it as a, as a major deal, I guess.
Can we review this in context of the sign by law? I did forget to bring my copy. I guess I could probably start my computer and get it, but.
Actually, we went over that with the building inspector. He thought we were okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, I didn't bring my copy of the signage by laws either.
I mean, I think we're just sort of in the habit of reviewing in context of our bylaws, right?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I think it's 5.1.
you have a tree shown in the rendering, some trees close by, that's not going to change? It's going to remain as?
We're probably going to put more planting than you see. We just did that as a quick scale. There's quite a bit more planting than that.
Do you want to just give it to where the dimensions are?
As he's doing this, my quick question is, how is this sign related to all the commercial space signage?
We'd be coming back for that, because we have bands on the building. They're about this wide.
Would the scale be complementary to the sign, or do you have a packet started for the commercial?
It would be much smaller. I mean, the sign that you see over our front door, it says the Asher. I think it's about 12 inches high. So probably something of that magnitude.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a white band that goes around the building.
Our dimensional standards right here. I will state that this falls in the Wildwood use mixed, Wild Use zoning district. It's been a while since I looked at the sign by law, per se, but the zoning, the zoning, the building commissioner who reviews all signs did review this, and has seized no issue. And I believe having this falling, would fall well under the maximum.
Is there anything under Wildwood that refer, I think, I think under Wildwood, it just refers back to the sign by law. But the sign by law doesn't necessarily spell out anything about, like, it doesn't really fit any of these commercial designations, right? So.
The Wild, I don't believe there's anything in Wildwood that actually shows a sign.
We couldn't find anything.
Yeah. This is the only project that's been, that's ever been built within the Wildwood district, within the Wildwood bylaws. I concur that we have to use the sign bylaws of our best ability.
This is a tricky one, because this talks about the whole frontage, and now you have multiple signage that will happen at the end of the day to look at this independently. So not sure if this is going to be helpful.
Well, actually, we have two streets. We have, one sign's on one street, and the other sign's on the other street. And one sign has about 550 feet of furniture, and the other's got 400, I think.
The one on the commercial side?
Yeah. It will way over furniture for a requirement.
Let's see if Kate a minute here to, just kind of going through.
No, we don't have a ton, a ton of rules about it, but we do try to make sure that we're.
Yeah, and there's nothing on this, obviously, there's nothing on this sign that's moving, or it doesn't change lights, just.
And the light, no, no, the light is very dim. We want it to be tasteful.
Right.
And that's the reason why we went with the muted colors, is just sort of there.
It is well done.
I agree. And the proportion is very elegant and much better than others. So I think, I don't see any issue with it.
Thank you.
All right.
I was just going to comment, the name Asher is an ancient Hebrew name.
I know that.
From Genesis. So.
What does it mean?
It means happiness and blessing.
That's exactly right.
And it's the eighth son of Jacob.
That's very good. Not too many people know that.
Wow. I tend to go to synagogue once in a while.
Is that, is that a person's name?
Yes, Asher, the tribe of Asher. So probably the most Jewish apartment name you can imagine in Ashland.
Well, my wife thought it up.
As long as you're aware of the association with the.
I'm very aware. That's one of the reasons we chose it.
With the old Genesis and Testament, and the significance of what that would have.
It just happens to tie into Ashland as well.
Indeed. So a very happy name.
All right.
I'm glad you knew that.
I'm sure my rabbi would be proud.
Got here just in time. All right, so if there's no other discussion, we should probably just make it formal, take a vote.
I make a motion that we approve the submitted sign for the Asher development.
I second.
And a roll call vote?
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcel Barhona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for coming back after our long meeting last time. Good night. All right. So next on our agenda is 501 Pond Street.
Only because I'm a direct-to-butter, I'll step out and let you guys talk about that.
Just forget that.
So next up is 501 Pond Street. Tonight, we have Matthew Stevens representing the application. At our last meeting, we did discuss it with their attorney, Mark Kablock. But I, as a review, excuse me, on December 8th, 2022, the Ashland Planning Board approved the special permit and site plan approval. Within that decision, we do, we did have a two-year limitation on that permit. And so on October 9th, we did receive an email from Mark Kablock, attorney of the project, requesting a two-year extension to that special permit. We did discuss that with attorney Kablock, and then we did ask to move the discussion to tonight. I do want to note that on November 12th, which would have been Tuesday, we did receive an email, which was forwarded out to the Planning Board, and it is further backup material that was submitted by Trask Development. In this instance, Trask is still the developer and the owner of the site and the permit. With that said, I will, does the board have any questions for myself? Okay. I would like to ask Matthew Stevens, Matthew, I am going to unmute, while I will make you a co-host, so you can now unmute yourself. And Mr. Stevens, can you please, indoor, this would be your opportunity to, opportunity to discuss with the Planning Board, any new outcomes, indoor opinions that you would like to share?
Yeah, certainly. So, good to see you all again. It's been a little bit. Matt Stevens with Trask Development. I can certainly kind of give an overview for everybody who doesn't have a letter in front of them of what's happened with the project to date. And then, I'm here today to just request for that two-year extension for the special permit, and then obviously answer any questions. And then obviously answer any questions anyone may have about the project as it stands currently. So would you like me to give an overview of that letter, or is that probably not necessary at this point?
I think for the public, I think it'd be great if you gave a quick overview.
Sure, sure. So as Peter mentioned, we had the special permit granted and the site plan review approved. That was December two thousand twenty-two. Since then, after we closed on the property with the prior owner, we did do some site work, mostly site preparation, removing the existing loan piles that were stored previously on the site by Fafford when they were using the site as, you know, loan storage and sifting facility. So removed all that, secured the site, and then worked with Mass DOT in connection with their ongoing work on Pond Street to put in all the granite curbing and secure entrances, aprons, asphalt, that sort of thing, to the site. And then we also, this summer, when we had the advantage of it being fairly dry, did the off-site sewer work. The name of that street is escaping me right now. But the off-site sewer work, that was a condition of this permit that was previously left uncompleted by the prior owner of the parcel of land. That was completed this summer, and that was done with collaboration with, obviously, Ashland DPW and then the town engineer as well. So that's what's been completed as far as actual items on site. We did previously have the property under agreement with a buyer, somebody who owns and operates an apartment building in Ashland. They actually own Ashland Woods, the project we had previously developed over on West Union Street. They were going to buy the permits for us, from us, and develop the property. They had it under contract for a little over a year. They were going through full design development with Icon, who was the project architect. And unfortunately, just given this current state of the lending environment for projects of this scale and construction costs, they were not able to continue with the project, so they have backed out. So now we have the project back in our possession fully. They were never able to close on it. So we're here now requesting this extension so that we can sort of pick back up where the previous potential buyer left off and have the time that we need to secure financing, do our own design development within the existing parameters of the project design, and then eventually get to a point where we could secure financing and construct the project.
Just one question, just, I'm deducting from what you're saying that you are, that TRASC is planning on developing the project? Or are you asking the extension because you're gonna be looking to sell the permit to somebody else?
At this moment, we are proceeding as if we are going to develop it. And, you know, an opportunity may present itself in the future. It's not a great time for other developers to be looking to buy permits at the moment, just given the lending environment. So we're proceeding as if it is us and would need this time to sort of start over, I guess.
My only question, I don't know if it's to Matt or Peter. Were there trees cleared on the site in preparation for this construction? Can, do we have the power to suggest that they plant trees in the wait time? Because now it's two years. And if they did, part of this letter looks like they did clear some trees. Can we enforce that we get them to plant trees so that if it is cleared, at least that can happen, the wait time?
Yeah, I think, you know, we can obviously discuss that. I think, you know, there was some, there was site work, you know. I will say that when TRASC Development did take the site on from Fafford, there was a lot of work to be done, right? Fafford did use that entire site for a, I would say, a storage area of gravel. So there was a lot of trucks that, you know, gravel that was removed. There was vegetation on that pile, and I, there was some trees that were taken down. So I think it would be appropriate to talk and to request that trees obviously be planted that will not impact the future construction, because I would not wanna ask a developer to plant trees that would impact the future construction here. I know going back into that hearing, thinking back, you know, two years ago, there was deep discussions about that row of evergreens at Abutter. Those are still intact, those are still healthy, and those are still there. I will say that.
But in the, on that discussion, there was also an extension of that row of trees for the neighbors, for privacy of the neighbors. That was a commitment of this project, right?
Yep.
That has not been done.
And not to this date, yes.
Yeah, and there was, there was right, I think shortly after the project was approved and the kind of fence went up around it, there were those end trees, that there were a couple of trees taken out, I think. And that kinda made a hole between the neighborhood and the empty property.
That's correct, yep.
And so for a while, there was like a construction fence there, I'm not sure, but it's not a pretty thing to look at for two years. And so I think, I think that hole, at least, and it could be other trees as well, but like Peter said, it's kinda hard to.
I remember we received an email from an Abutter complaining of the trees that had been removed. And it was responded to as part of the process, of course, it has to be prepared.
Yep.
But neighbors were uncomfortable about that. And two years later, probably the hole is there, but no project, so.
Okay. Yeah, Matt, do you have any, do you have any response to that inquiry?
Yeah, so the reason why trees weren't planted in that sort of, that open area right behind at the back left corner of the project is that's where, if I remember it correctly, the sewer connection is going in. So we were reluctant to plant anything that could develop a significant root system in size, knowing that we would have to eventually take it out to then do all of the utility work there. So that's why that area had remained open. And the berm that we had proposed and that was approved, the berm with the additional large arbivites that will be planted on top of it had not been put in that area to this date.
I mean, that sounds like something that, because I know last time, I think people were comfortable with a year extension, which I personally kinda still am, because that doesn't mean they can't come back. We don't have something in our bylaws prohibiting that. And then certainly, maybe making that progress shows a lot of progress. Of like, that sewer work could be done sooner in the year and then make that part of that project hole.
Just to clarify, the sewer work was already completed.
He just said that they need sewer connections, and that's why there's that opening.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about the.
Yes, no, I understand.
Miss, miss.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I was in the same boat last time around. I, I think putting a sewer connection for a project that's not being built in the foreseeable future immediately doesn't make practical sense to me. That's the civil work that is engaged with a bunch of other coordinating contractors that have to do with, with a project of this size. I, I think, given the fact that the project has made good on the commitment to fix the sewer station, whatever that condition was, I, I think it's, it, that shows some merit that they're moving forward. I, I would like to see if it's possible, some, or confirm if the neighbors have complained of some other trees, maybe not in the exact location where the sewer connection is going to take place. That makes logical sense. But if there's any other area, I, I would like to make sure that for the next two years, that the neighbors are comfortable with, with the approach. And if TRASC is amenable to doing that, maybe you have to plant a couple of trees. I don't think that would be a big burden if, if we can request that.
I, I don't see why not, I think, you know, I think, you know, that question really is for TRASC and to make sure that we can obviously come to that agreement. To obviously make sure that, you know, please, trees are planted in that back corner for a way for the community in the rear, obviously, to feel like they, like they're not, they don't have a gap, they don't have a hole.
Exposed.
They're exposed, thank you. They're exposed for two additional years when, you know, two additional years, those trees can grow a lot, you know, and they can kinda get going. And obviously, that would just move that growing process on and maturity along for those, for that vegetation.
Yeah, and if it's something that, I mean, I don't know if, if it's something that the trees would have to be taken back up again, I guess, you know, which in certain kinds of trees, you could, is fine, you get them, like arbivites, right? They, they come in, they go down. But another option might be to put in a wooden fence or something along that. I'm not sure if that would be acceptable, but something that, last time a fence went in, it was just kind of this ugly construction fence.
It was, it was a construction fence with a green mesh.
Yeah, which is.
Ope-, opaque, opaque green mesh.
Yeah, which is not a two-year solution.
Correct.
But I didn't know if, versus trees, which will be small and not provide really privacy? Or could it be a wooden fence or something for that, that length where the hole is? I'm just throwing it out there as another potential idea to provide that kind of buffer enclosure, right, of the neighborhood. What does anyone else think about that?
Yeah, I think, I think we should leave it up to them to make a strategic call. If they are going ahead with the assumption that this design is going to progress at some point, if they wanna choose a strategic location, because they did bring down some trees. So I think, give them that room to make that call of choose that location where it actually makes sense. Not sure how many trees were brought down, but at least to make that strategic call of like, can we make that oneest one and have backup there?
And bottom line, I, I think what I was trying to say is that I, we all want this project to, to happen.
Yeah.
And it's good for Ashland, it's, it was a great project that we worked a lot on. And so I'm, I'm, I'm positive about giving them the extension myself. If, if, if we can make sure that the neighbors have not been impacted by this delay, that's all. So we're not just negotiating it tit for tat, anything. It's just a concern for the neighbors, because they have been patient, and hopefully, that's understandable.
And, and what is on the rest of the site right now? I, I was down there recently, but I, I didn't note, like, we're, this is very dry weather. We're not having any dust, there's enough, there's enough to hold down.
There, I haven't, there's been no dust concerns, it's extremely dry weather. You know, it's, it's a vacant site. However, yes, they have worked with DOT for the roads, for the road requirements. But yeah, it's a, it's a fairly fallow vacant site.
But it's not causing any, we haven't, obviously, had problems with, if there's any problems with dust or stormwater runoff or anything like that? It seemed, when I was there, it seemed very, kinda buttoned up.
It was buttoned, it's always been buttoned up. When they first started moving dirt around, the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Agent Pekasama was out there in communications with TRASC Development. But that has since, I, I think all those small details have been worked out, you know, I would say for better, a better part of a year now, a year and a half. So, so to my knowledge, yeah, there has not been any real intricate issues with the site. It's just a kind of a, it's a quiet vacant site.
So then it would be a, and, you guys correct me if this isn't what you're thinking. A two-year, a one or two-year extension? I hear Kate saying one, Marcelo's maybe leaning two, but both contingent on doing something with that corner in order to not leave it open for potentially two years. Is that, is it correct?
Can I just reach out to Matt? Matt, do you have any, do you wanna, do you wanna, do you wanna weigh in here, representing TRASC Development regarding added vegetation in that back corner, either vegetation indoor or wooden stockade fence?
Yeah. Just, my sort of gut check reaction to it is, I think a wooden stockade fence would make a quicker and potentially prettier long-term solution for whether it be one or two years, because we can put it in now and it's gonna look good immediately, as opposed to us being kinda limited on what we can get for nursery stock of arbivites and things right now. And then who knows how well they'll do being planted in November. So, I mean, I'm amenable to either. And I can understand it, since now it's a big gaping opening where there was once vegetation. So I can understand the neighborhood concerns about that. So I'm amenable to either option. I think personally, would probably prefer the stockade fence, because that can be done quickly and, and have real privacy quickly.
Thank you, Matt.
Is there any, is there any public comment on this project? I don't know if anyone, there is one hand up?
Yep, I'm gonna call on Brian McCarthy. Brian McCarthy, on the Zoom meeting, I'm going to ask you to unmute. I'm sorry, Mr. Brian McCarthy, I believe you may have.
Sorry, inadvertent, inadvertent hand.
Okay, sorry. Just wanted to make sure I was covering all bases, thank you, Brian.
All right, so where are, from the board, where are we, verse one versus two, first of all?
I'm fine doing two, personally.
I would like to stick with one, because we're not prohibiting coming back. And I, and I feel like that we, that's, if they need to come back, that's insisting they do. We're not just not knowing what's going on and not being able to communicate. Because I'm glad that you remembered the neighbors, but I also remember that the, the Abutter at the assisted living, like, that's probably because a lot of people are around there a lot, but I, they did ask about that. So I, I think that's another reason to keep it more at the forefront.
They, they asked about what, did you?
Um, just what's going on, because sometime, some of them, I mean, I think Peter's called, like, they're older and they, they worked in construction, they're interested. I'm not saying they had complaints, but my point is this way, it's, if something isn't moving in a year, we will have a definite record of coming back, instead of, we're not sure what's happening.
Deepa, what is your feeling on the one versus two?
Given the landscape, hopefully, one will be advantageous to the team. But I'm not opposed to sticking with one, as Kate said, so that it comes back. And if required, we could always renew it, so.
Okay. And I'm pretty flexible on that, so, and what is the thought about the vegetation versus the fence?
The fence makes sense, I mean, vegetation right now, especially in the winter coming in, makes no sense at all.
Okay.
It will take a lot longer, probably a full year before it can be done. So I think Matt is correct, that would be a more immediate solution.
Okay, so we're looking at like.
If you're putting the timeline at one year, I think I'm okay with the fence. If it was a two-year, I would have revisited that, but.
Okay. So based on that discussion, does someone have a motion they wanna put forth?
I make a motion that the 501 Pond Project be given a one-year extension and with TRASC Development doing some mitigation for the opening caused by the tree removal in the corner.
Yep.
Technical question.
Peter?
Yeah.
But what if, I wanted to make a motion for a two-year extension? Can we do two motions or not? Or are we agreeing, I mean, if the two of you feel ask Kate, then I will just not say anything.
And my question also adding to that is, is it in our purview to stop that? Make it one year versus two years? Is there anything that's?
No, it's really a discussion between us and the applicant, right? I think going back and forth, it's, 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 it's a, it's a discussion between us two. Obviously, they're requesting two, we say one. You know, I think we could have the ability to say, here's two, but we're gonna make it, we're gonna make it a condition that you're gonna come back to us in a year and give us a full update on what's going on, right? I think that's also part of the possi-, of possibility that we could discuss, right? That we wanna quarterly update on the situation there. Because yes, you know, we don't know what's, we haven't known for two years what's going on except here and there. So I think that is, could be kinda discussed with the applicant. And I think that's just one of these conversations that had to happen. And I think it's, it was a great discussion about, you know, having some, some screenage, some, some screenage developed, such as a wood fence. And I concur with Marcelo and Matt that a wood fence could be installed within two weeks, right? When it would be very difficult to get a green arbivite, you know, arbivites planted in November. It's thirty-two degrees out tonight, it's cold. We're at the end of the planting season. We're at the end of the planting season. With the, the planting season has ended. So I think that was a right call, but it really is a discussion between, between us.
But I, I just wanted to add one more thought. Because the, the the, the way I'm, I'm thinking about it, I really want the project to take, to happen. Because Ashland would benefit from it. And, and, and the neighbors would benefit from having something there instead of an empty lot or a stockpile of material. But the, the, the environment, the economic environment of, of, of the last year or two years have been difficult for, for, for
Very.
people that need lending to, to, to make things happen. So I, I, I'm thinking that they, they've worked on the sewer connection correction that they were required to. They, they buttoned up the site. And they are agreeing to close the gap to make sure that the neighbors don't have to see that, that opening. I, I, I would like to remove burdens from them to try to get this project to happen and having to worry about this other thing. I mean, we, we could, could request it for sure. But hopefully the, the economic activity will, will, all the interest rates will, will get in a better place in the next year. Who knows? Nobody knows.
So, so would updates say even like every six months? I mean, because even the years, I mean, even over the past two years, every once in a while, we would hear something about that was happening, but it wasn't, it wasn't like someone coming to tell us. Right? So would that would even more frequently help us not be in this no man's land kind of about knowledge versus waiting a year and seeing?
Well, I mean, they're not mutually exclusive. Like a year extension can still ask for updates.
Right, right.
I, I just have a question for Matt, the applicant. Matt, would you have a, would, would you want to weigh in, you know, obviously Trask Development, are you you know, in your, you know, are you, are you, what are your thoughts on coming, you know, I would say every six months back to the Planning Board and giving everybody an update? You know, official update on, on the status of the project?
I would be more than happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
No problem.
If we can enforce that, then I'm good with a two-year extension as well.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the floor. It has not been seconded. So if, and if there is no second, we will look for another motion to be put on the floor.
Kate, how do you feel about? Are you still?
I think, I think there's good conversations, but I am, because I, I've looked a lot and, and some towns give six months, one, you're done. And I feel like we're, we're not, um, I, I think they have done some work, but it's going to keep it further at the front if we ask for the year and give, and say that we're serious about it. It, it's not going to impair the project moving forward by giving one year. And it feels like it's making it serious about what the Planning Board does, to me.
What would be fun serious about the two-year extension?
I, I feel like that's too much. I mean, so many things change. You know, that would be four years.
Well, the first two years is in the.
I could comment on the timeline just briefly and nobody wants to build this more than we do. It just does not pencil right now. It's when we started permitting the project, we could have gotten the financing we needed to build this, the $30 million construction loan. We would have been fine. But in the time sense, it no longer makes financial sense. And the only thing that's going to make this make financial sense is a change in the lending environment. And I would love to think that that's going to happen in six months, which would work with a one-year timeline. But if the past two years have taught us anything, it's, that's probably not going to happen. We're going to have to wait a little longer. And we could do a one-year extension, but we'll be back here next November talking about this again. The two years gets us the time not to just, you know, have this thing sitting in our office as something we'll do one day, but to check every day of interest rates and talk to our mortgage, mortgage brokers and all of them to hopefully one day have a time when this can financially work for us. Or for anyone frankly, in, in our position in the current lending environment. So it's, it's, I understand the desire to put pressure on us, but unfortunately, the external factors that are delaying this is not just us wanting to delay it. It's the fact that it's not financeable at the moment, given the current lending environment. And I don't have control over that. And I'd love to think that would change in a year. But I'm not too optimistic that 12 months is going to change a lot. And having the two years for us would give us the opportunity to jump when we have the ability to jump on this project and put the ball in motion and do all of the background work that we're going to need to do before we can even start talking about construction financing and closing on a loan with the bank and taking on additional debt on the site on top of what we already have. Plus the money we've already spent on the offsite sewer and the site work. So I understand the desire for pressure. But I, I want you to understand that it's not just us that's delaying this. It's, it's everything that's, that's holding this project up.
I, I think, I think we get that. I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't really understand the difference from your perspective about one or two years. Except just not having to come back in a year. It's not like there was any more work that needed to be done or, or anything like that. For us, maybe it's just. Can make a comment. If, if you have something to help us better understand that, that would be appreciated. So, um, so I guess that's what I'm trying to understand that, you know, because things do change over, over time, right? So I'm, I don't, I'm not sure I still understand the difference from your perspective about one or two years, except that we don't have to worry about that for two years. We can just, you know, kind of work on something else. Versus maybe the one year puts it a little bit more in the forefront. I, I don't know. I would, I would like to understand it better. I would, I would love to have some. What's that?
I don't know if you're at that point yet in your hearing, so.
Yeah, if, if there are public comments, I will take them from anywhere, the room or on screen. Appreciate some other points of view.
Sure. Yolanda, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Uh, just Yolanda, I'm just going to make sure your, the microphone is live.
Okay, I think it is. Great. Yolanda Graves, 127 Prospect Street. To just be, I am on the select board, but I'm here as a resident. I'm not here representing any other committee, just myself. You know, listening to this conversation. And I understand the sense of, okay, if we only do it for a year, then they'll have to come back, but and even though that doesn't seem like a big ask, I think for an organization like Trask who does a lot of development, we know them here in town. They've done a lot of good projects. And I think if you're putting in that they need to come back every six months anyway, I think that two years gives them the flexibility, as Matt said, to sort of do the process. And if something happens sooner, they can get, get moving sooner. If they can't, then they have those two years. But if you're asking them to come back any six, every six months anyway, just to give an update, I mean, I don't know that it has to be in person. I think it can be an email saying, hey, this is where we're at based on what's going on with financing. And we all know the next six to 12 months are going to be very uncertain with the change of leadership at the federal level, how that's going to affect everybody. So I think we have a developer here who has been very proactive and works with us here in town, has done some good projects. I think if you give it, let it be two years, but coming back, you know, giving an update every six months, I think that would be to his benefit and to the town's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Right? Any other comments on that? Okay. Well then, is there a second to Kate's motion?
Sorry, Kate.
All right. Then if not, then I'll be looking for a, a different motion from the floor.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the two-year extension for the special permit and site plan review of 501 Pond Street.
With the condition of?
With the condition of having a, um, an update report every six months, starting today.
And the fence?
Oh. Sorry. And the installation of, of a wooden stockade fence on, on the area that's, that's projected to have future planting to close up the, the visual relationship with the neighbors.
Second half.
All right. And a roll call vote?
Deepa Mangatay.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. And we would appreciate it if you make that fence kind of nice.
Yeah, we'll just do like a cedar stockade. Decorative caps.
All right.
That works.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. I'll be in touch. And for the Planning Board side of things, I will draft up a memo and we'll have it at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Make it official.
We'll have to sign that, right?
I don't have it with us right now, but I'll, I'll sign it and I'll, I'll draft it and then I'll have it at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so. And that is back with us. So next on our agenda is a new public hearing and I will have Peter introduce that.
Yes, thank you so much. So the next public hearing is a, is a fun project that the town of Ashland's been working on for a couple of years now. And so now it's coming, it's coming to fruition. So to, before I kind of give a preamble and, and hand it off to the Ashland Dog Park Committee, I'm going to read the public hearing into the record. The Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February, excuse me, not February, November 14th, 2024 at 7:15 PM in the second floor hearing room, Ashland Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721. This Ashland public hearing can be joined via Zoom conference. Please see attached Planning Board agenda for this link. The Planning Board will hear the petition of the town of Ashland requesting site plan review and design review per Chapter 48, Section 6 of the Ashland zoning act and Chapter 280, excuse me, 282 9.6 Design Review Plans and 9.4 Site Plan Review of the Ashland Bylaws. The applicant is proposing to develop a dog park. The dog park will be divided into two areas. Depend, depending on the dog type and or size. A 16,000 square foot large dog area will be included and a 2,000 square foot dog area for small dogs. Both areas will be, excuse me, properly divided with chain link fence. Chain link fence will be surrounded by two areas with an appropriate entrance. Site plantings will be installed according to the proposed landscaping plan. The site will include a 20-car par- uh, 20-car paved parking area and the infiltration basin for stormwater control. The area will be developed, excuse me, the total area will develop. Excuse me. The total area of development will be 1.47 acres and will provide the community of Ashland in additional recreational space for residents and their pets. The property in question is located at Zero MBTA access, excuse me, Zero Memorial Drive. That is a mistake. Accessors Map 13 Lot 138 and is located in the rail transit district. Parts which should be heard should submit comments to the Ashland Planning Board ahead of time and or appear in public. Please note that within your packet, we did receive one email, which is provided to. With that said, before I hand it over, the town of Ashland, as I said, has been working on this. And we have, um, first and foremost, we have Yolanda Graves here from the Dog Park Committee. Also, we have Cara Terrell of the Dog Park Committee. Town Assistant Town Manager Jen Ball is also on the call and she will help represent this application. As well as Michael Radner. Michael Radner has been working with the town to design the proposed dog park. Michael and his team will be draw, walking us through the proposed site plan, which is in front of all Planning Board members, and I will be happy to share that online and or allow Michael to share his screen to allow that dog park for a presentation. With that said, would anybody from the Ashland Dog Park like to step forward and add anything to the introduction of this project? Okay. Assistant Town Manager Jen Ball, would you like to add anything to this project? Before I ask Michael to introduce this project and go and review the site plan.
Hey, Peter, I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yep, I got you. I made you a co-host. You're all set.
All right, thanks. So thank you for taking the time to hear this. This project has, has been going on for a number of years. We've had some fits and starts with our designer. And so we have worked with the, the, the community group that has been working on it for, and Yolanda can probably speak to it a bit more in the room and Cara as well, for a, a number of years to bring this to fruition. Michael Radner has put together a, a plan that really takes into consideration the site and all of its sort of topography. And so I can turn it over to him to sort of explain all the features and go through the plans.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, Michael, I am making you a co-host, which also gives you the ability to share your screen.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Uh, yep, we can hear you loud and clear.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Radner with Radner Design Associates, the three allied drive in Dedham. And I, I do have a brief slide deck I'll take you through, which is not all of the sheets that are in your plan, but I kind of picked out the most significant ones and a few pictures and examples of what we think the dog park is going to look like. So we'll get going with that. And the site, I think that a lot of people are aware of this. Let me see if I can zoom a little bit. Make it a little bit bigger for you. Is north of the middle school site on Memorial Drive. You can see the Dunkin' Donuts here along 135 is just off the screen to the right. And this is the site right here. And this is, we started on this last winter. That's how long we've been working on this. So I took some pictures last winter, and this is the condition with the middle school fields on your right and the site is on the left. And you could see sort of various types of vegetation in here. You can see that there is thankfully, the snow is, help us, helps us show the topography of the site a little bit. You can see some of these rolling conditions in here. We have some eastern white pine and then back in the site is kind of like a, a lot of pine and, and oak trees. And, and it's a wooded site. There are some areas that have you know, sort of eight to 12 inch caliper trees. And a little bit further in, there's some larger caliper trees. You can see the topographic conditions in there. And I, I only show this because as we, as the town prepares for their, or we're in the process of a grant application with the Stanton Foundation, who funds a large majority of the, of the construction and the design of this project. And the grading of the site is a significant factor in how we, in, in the cost of the site and how we design the site plan and so forth. So I'll get to that momentarily. This is a, a picture of, there's a existing oil line easement that runs through the site. Jen could talk about this more, but basically it's an abandoned oil line and I don't think I'm going out on a limb, Jen, by saying that, that Shell Oil is, is in the process of releasing the, um, uh, the rights to this so that we can work in the site.
That is correct.
Yeah. This is our topographic survey of the site. And basically, the area that we're talking about is inside this buildable area in here, which is really defined by the existing wetlands that kind of surround the site on three out of four sides. And we, we have been to the Conservation Commission. We had one hearing there, which we've, believe we've answered many, if not all of their questions. We were just waiting from a, a file number from the DEP before they could close that hearing, but they have reviewed this. They've reviewed the stormwater on this and provided their comments. So and you could see the topographic lines in here, which indicates, you know, the, the sort of the ups and downs of the site. And as I was saying, as we go through the process of getting our funding from the Stanton Foundation, one of the things that they require or like to see, and it's just good design, is that we have a basically flat site. So that when there's a lot of paw traffic, if you will, over the site. so that when there's a lot of paw traffic, if you will, over the site, that we minimize erosion. It's better just for the environment and for the dogs to basically run on a flat site, more easy to maintain, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a nice little colored graphic that we put together that shows Memorial Drive down here, the vehicular entrance to the site, parking for 20 cars, and this is a paved parking lot. We do have, we will have pedestrian access to the site. There is a sidewalk on the south side of Memorial Drive that runs the length of Memorial Drive. So there will be a new crosswalk in this location here with a pedestrian activated signal so that when you go to that location, you press the button and the lights flash and you can cross a sidewalk along this edge of the parking lot. And then I'm just going to zoom in a little bit here. This is the large dog park on the left and that's about 16,000 square feet. I want to say it's maybe 150 feet long from end to end. And then the small dog park is 2,000 square feet. The whole large dog, small dog thing is a little bit of a term of art. It's not necessarily determined by the size of the dog, but more of their personality, if you will. Active dogs kind of like tend to go in the larger space and little shy dogs like mine would like to stay separate from those big dogs and have a little more quiet experience. So then we have a stormwater infiltration area here. We have some landscape buffering along the front of the site. And then along the west and north sides of the site, this is a planting strip that was talked about with the Conservation Commission, where they had a concern of basically dog waste being in this area and providing some protection to the wetlands around this area. And it's, we're calling it phyto remediation. Basically, it's a planting strip that will help interrupt and absorb some of the dog urine and dog waste before it gets into the wetlands. You have an erosion control plan in your packet. I can certainly answer questions there. We have a construction entrance here. We also had, I don't know that Peter mentioned, we have Nick Condeck also on the calls, a civil engineer from High Point Engineering, who helped us put together the engineering plan for this and the stormwater report as well. So here's a little more of a technical document, which has a materials plan, which just describes the materials. And I do want to talk about the fact that this area here is, the surface of this is going to be what we call rice stone. It's kind of like peystone. It's almost the same thing. It's going to be surrounded by a four foot high black chain link fence to contain the dogs in this area. So what we have here is this, this area here, sort of along the parking lot, is a cleared and graded, basically flat area inside the fence line. And then we are leaving natural, the back part. Over here, there are some larger trees back here that we'd like to save. It's already relatively flat here so that we think we can take out some of the underbrush and the smaller trees here and put a layer of wood chips down here and still have a successful surface. And just to show you what that would look like, this is, we also did the Framingham Dog Park. If you've been over there, this is what the rice stone looks like. It's a very finely graded stone. It's rounded and it tends to be soft on the paws of the dogs. And you can see that the stone is contained. It's set slightly below the level of the concrete walkway. And we have a, we'll call it like a Trex decking on its side kind of area here that contains the stone and keeps everything in place. So that's kind of the look and the feel of what you're going to see out there. There's grading plan in here. You can see that the contours here indicate a very flattened surface. And then everything is pitching basically from east to west, even the parking lot is surface drains and a curbless parking lot here and the water flows into a series of basins that would fill up in a big storm, overflow into a structure and then exit the site at this point over here. And I'll, we have Nick on the call also and I'll get to him in a moment. And he can talk about the stormwater design. There is a landscaping plan in the packet. As I mentioned, we have a series of larger plantings along the front of the site. This meets your bylaw in terms of providing landscape between the parking lot and the street. Some eastern white pines here to kind of screen the stormwater facility. And then you could see our phyto remediation plantings along the back edge of the site in this location. And then some details here. You can see this little section of what that rice stone area would look like so that the stone is contained within the dog park. This is our phyto remediation planting with a little bit of a berm there. And you could see the fence and the composite Trex board here. And then just some other pictures that will have some seating. These are the, you've seen these doggy poe or doggy pot. I don't know how they're pronounced. The trash receptacles for, that will have the waste bags in there. And these are going to be several of these around the site. And then a water bottle filler, two of them actually within the site. It's a condition of the grant that we have water available at the site. Here is the utility and drainage plan and I'll just let Nick, I see Nick is here. Peter, can you let him unmute?
Yeah, Nick, you're a co-host, so please feel free to unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Nick Condeck from High Point Engineering. We were the civiles on this project. So to get into some things Mike was talking about. So the drainage for the parking lot flows from plan east to west. And there won't be a curb on that end of the parking lot, so it'll kind of flow overland into that sediment for bay. What happens? That'll fill up, the sediment will settle and then it'll spill over into the infiltration basin. And the infiltration basin was sized for 100 year storm and it provides about a little over a foot of freeboard. And in 100 year storm event, there's very little discharge to the surrounding wetlands via that outlet control structure. The remainder of the site is that rice stone surface and also past the rice stone surface, it's kind of left as a natural wooded area. So there's very little runoff that will be generated in those areas. So the site does comply with the stormwater standards. And yeah, that's about it for drainage design goes. So there are some bubblers on site. And so we'll have to tap into a water main on the opposite side of Memorial Drive. And that'll be a one inch, one inch line. We'll be providing a water meter backflow enclosure right at the entrance. You can see it labeled there. Thanks, Mike. And yeah, that was about it for High Point Scope for this project. Any additional questions on drainage? I can get into it more technically.
Thanks, Nick. That concludes the presentation.
Hold up just a minute. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to note, it's been a few years, but Michael and I have worked on a project or two together. It was quite a few years ago now. I don't know if you remember.
Hi, Tricia, yeah.
I didn't know that you did, that you did dog parks, so it's good to see you again. So just one question that I had first, that this is also, these are Labor Planning Board and Conservation Commission. Has it been through the Conservation Commission or is it doing simultaneously?
So simultaneously, yes. They did file with both of us, just where the schedules worked out. They have already met with Conservation.
Okay, and so this is, are the plans we're seeing approved by Conservation or in process or?
They're in the process right now. As noted, they don't have a DPE file has not been issued. So they did not close the hearing yet, but yes, this project was presented to the Conservation Commission.
Okay, great.
And I'll add that we, there were no issues. I mean, I think we answered all of their questions in that hearing. So we walked away. We didn't have anything outstanding unless something comes up between now and the next public hearing.
So what was the document you were mentioning, Peter, that you needed? DET?
Excuse me, DEP file number.
Oh, okay.
That was one of the elements that the Conservation Commission needs to close a public hearing. So I think Michael, in his presentation noted that they're waiting for a DEP file number.
Okay.
And then they'll most likely move forward with limited, with limited concern from the Conservation Commission. But myself, Becca Solomon, you know, we've been meeting with Jen. We had a tech review meeting on this with the DPW. So we've all, you know, it's a town project. We've all kind of, you know, it's gone through the normal process that any project would regarding vetting.
Okay, great, thank you. Marcelo?
Yeah, I mean, there's not much to, nothing really to object about this project, but just one question maybe for the civil engineer. I understand how the drainage of the parking lot drains into this kind of sediment filtration area and then into catch basin. Typically, on every project, I remember that we approve private projects, parking lots, we always ask to have areas of planting that filter that sediment or gas spillages or salt or sand. I don't see any, any, any plantings there. Is that something that is possible or has been contemplated? Maybe the engineer can.
So I'll take a first shot at this. Thank you for the question. So the area, if I go to the planting plan, what we're proposing right now is a grass filter strip is that first filter before the water gets into this sediment for bay. And then within the footprint of the for bay and the infiltration basin is a native seed mix, which is going to have a mix of grasses to filter the water and absorb the water. And that seed mix is a combination of drought tolerant and wet tolerant species.
No, I think I get it. It's just that there's no planting shown there and we typically ask all private projects to. I mean, it comes time and again. I don't have any specific complaint, but this is going to be kind of experienced as a, like a ditch, isn't it? It's not, nothing else than.
So you're talking about having plants like within the, within the stormwater area?
Well, usually, I don't know if, I don't remember the term, but the design review committee always comes up with that recommendation for every parking lot that where, that they's curbless, just like this one, but for the water not to just go into a ditch and just leave the sediment there, but just have some plants that, little plants that I guess usually are used for that purpose of filtering the water before it goes into the catch basin. So I don't know if that was contemplated at all.
Yeah, so is, I guess, so the question is, is the catch basin just, like, I guess, how does that function?
No, I'm sorry. Are we talking about this, this area here is a filter before it goes into the for bay or are you suggesting?
That's what I'm referring to because I think that's how we have requested a lot of projects to do.
Okay. Okay, well, we can certainly look at extending. We do have some plantings here and you can see this. These are tall grasses and perennials and shrubs that are extended into part of that, that we could look at extending it along the whole length of that.
Yeah, so does that, from your, from your standpoint, Michael, does that make sense of the water draining off the parking lot going through like a filtering, kind of, I don't want to say berm, but a filtering strip of plants before it goes into the holding area? I think, I think that's what.
Yeah, I think what we don't want to have is, Nick will correct me, but we don't want to have, we don't want to have a berm. We don't want to have, allow the water to flow off the pavement and directly into that for bay. So we just have to make sure that the way that it's graded is that we don't have like a buildup of thatch there that's going to impound the water at this western edge of the parking lot.
Right, so that we're not impeding the water from getting where it wants to go. It's just helping to filter it before it gets there.
So I have a question related to that. So that entire basin is because we paved a parking lot? Like, is there other things? I think that's what it looks like. I mean, is there other, like, there's perennial paving? Like, is it, if we did other, you know, compacted stone and you weren't paving it, would we have to do all that? Because I, like, it's a wooded area, right? And, I mean, the dog park's great, let's start out so people aren't thinking I'm against the dog park. But I, like, this is the kind of one time to take a forest and make a dog park and try to make it to the best of our ability. So I, I don't, I don't know that that's like the best design a paved parking lot.
My question was related to Kate's, which is, does the grant application require a paved parking lot?
The grant, the grant making authority does not require a paved parking lot. We, the discussion that we've had with people from DPW and engineering are that they felt that a gra, we did talk about gravel parking lot and they thought that it was not maintainable in the long run. They thought that this would, the paving would be a much more stable, long-term solution rather than having to come back, you know, every year, every other year and repair ruts and so forth. Because I think there's going to be a lot of turning movements in here as people back in and out. So, but, but we did discuss it and, and, you know, the town, DPW and the people that are going to maintain the site had thought that asphalt paving was the best solution.
So, I mean, I have some comments, I guess, that have nothing to do with the presentation. And I really appreciate the presentation. I think that anytime a client comes to a team, this is exactly the kind of presentation that is expected. So thank you so much. I think it's great. I think my comments are more for the planning board and kind of my reaction as a dog owner and a lover of taking my dog outside, which is that when I travel to East City, I find that city dwellers are looking for natural space. Like, you go to New York, people want to go to Central Park and avoid parking lots and paved spaces and they want shade for their dog, especially in the summer. I can tell you, someone who has walked a dog in Ashland State Park in the middle of the summer, in the heat, you want to be in the shade. My dog actually could make it all the way around during heat and certainly would not enjoy a parking lot in any way. Many dogs are not comfortable in parking lots on their paws. So I can tell you, for me, living in Ashland, seeing a project being proposed in a wooded area, I don't feel comfortable with that as a dog owner. And there's so many parks in the area, whether it's in Framingham, Sherburne, that I take my dog to that have gravel parking lots where I would much rather walk my dog than what looks to me like a playground for kids rather than dogs. So I very much appreciate the project and I think there's a lot of effort that came into it. And so I, for one, am having a hard time even having an opinion because it's so late in the game. The project is sort of cooked. There's a lot of thought that came into it on a site that's fully wooded, that's very natural. And I think the process is so far along that it's very difficult for me as a planning board member to even have an opinion that can be respected by anyone who's been involved in the project. So my comment on this is what a wonderful concept and idea and how I wish we as a planning board had been involved way sooner so we would not take public land that's fully wooded and turn it into a paved playground for dogs when so many of our dog owners, as you know, prefer natural space like Ashland State Park to walk their dogs and be with their dogs. So I'm sure that this is very subjective and there's dog owners who will love this space more than I do. But I can tell you, I really wish we had more input way earlier in the process because I think it's a beautiful idea, just not in the right space.
Are you, are you trying to understand, are you concerned about the material, all the stone, the rice stone on the dog park area?
I mean, I'm just looking as a matter of policy. We're looking at a wooded land owned by the town that we're choosing to deforest, put a paved parking put a paved parking lot because it's quote unquote easier to take care of so that our wonderful dogs can be in what looks to me like an urban space. I'm making a comment aesthetically that I'm not sure this is consistent with what this planning board would have maybe thought about had we had the town come to us earlier in the process to say, hey, these are some of the sites we're thinking about. Surely, there's gotta be a less forested, flatter space that the town owns. So again, this is the kind of thing Anna says, that everybody then says, well, this was already pre-thought and how dare the planning board have such thoughts? And so what I'm going to say is very, very straightforward. I will not be voting on this project. I will not stand against it because so much work has come into it. But I also can't approve it because to me, taking forested land that belongs to the people of Ashland to turn it into a paved playground for dogs just doesn't sit well with me. Maybe if we made it for kids, I would have a different opinion. Maybe if children were playing there, I would have a slightly different view. But to me, a dog, for me as a dog owner, is an animal that appreciates natural space and frankly loves trees to pee and do other business with. And so personally, I have trouble with kind of having an opinion on this project this late in the game. I really wish we had been involved sooner. And I, I know that sounds very harsh, so to be clear, I love the concept and the heart of it, which is, let's give our dogs more space to play in. I think that is so important. I just wish the town had come to the planning board that actually plans a little bit sooner. This late in the game, to even have this opinion is probably like, oh my God, how dare she even have an opinion? So I will have no opinion as a vote. I will just share my view that really this process, again, and I keep seeing this with every town project, we come to it as a planning board by the time it's already pre-thought, pre-cooked, and everyone loves it.
I think it does have a very long history, um, which I'm not, it, it has come before, um, the CPC. So we've seen it quite a while ago, um, with some of the funding mechanisms. Yolanda, are you approaching the microphone? Cause I think you've been involved from a long time, so... So there's also many Ashland residents who have been involved, if, even though it's the first time.
To be clear, I don't need to be convinced.
Even though it's the first time before the planning board, so, Yolanda?
So, in actuality, this is not the first time it's come to the planning board. I believe it might be the first time that all of you as members have seen it. So a little history, uh, as a mem, and so, Yolanda Graves, 127 Prospect Street. I'm a member of the Ashland Dog Park Committee. It is a committee who said, we wanna create a dog park in town. And probably eight years ago, they got together and they said, can the select board appoint a dog park committee? And we were, based on how other things have worked in town, volunteer committees sometimes can get things done a little bit sooner. So we didn't, as a select board, we did not create a dog park committee. We said to them, if you guys wanna do this, do some work. They got some volunteers together. As someone who heard many times from people that they were upset with how our state park was being treated like a dog park and dogs park, you know, dogs would be running loose and there was erosion on certain things. When these people came to me, I said, great, start working on it. Uh, we've looked at numerous sites since we started this process, like I said, probably seven or eight years ago. And one of the first sites was over at the Cadillac Paint Site. It was in a neighborhood, we talked to the people in the neighborhood, they said, no, we, we really don't want it there. Another site was over by the animal shelter, our, our animal control over by, by Public Works off of Ponderosa Road. With the Riverwalk going in there, people were like, no, we don't want it there. Uh, we looked off of Olive Street, a couple of parcels there. And again, people were like, we don't want it in the neighborhood, it's gonna add to the traffic. So when the town purchased this property, I forget how long ago we did that, it was determined that this could be a great location for a dog park, understanding that we'd have to take some trees and things like that. But the support from the community as we started talking about this site was, you're gonna save the state park, you're gonna save some of the, um, running down of the trails because the dogs are running loose. And here is a location that, yes, we'll have to take some trees, but we're taking only part of them. And like I said, probably six or five or six years ago, before, I believe, most of you were sitting as planning board members, the committee came to both the planning board and the select board to talk about creating a park at this location. Unfortunately, because of timing and other things that were going on in town, this particular project kept getting put on a back burner and put on a back burner. And there is an organization called the Stanton Foundation and they grant money for dog parks, which we've been working with them and getting information and the kind of dog parks they see. Framingham is a Stanton Grant Dog Park. They, again, the town has to put in some money and then you get some money from the Stanton Foundation. At the, at the Framingham Park, there is a paved parking lot near their, near their park. And other dog parks have paved parking lots. Uh, so I, I hear what's being said, that you guys haven't been involved in the process. But there was information brought to the planning board previously. So if we knew, if we thought we should've come sooner, we would've come sooner. But there was no indication in regards to the process that after that initial time that we came and said what we wanted to do and we got some feedback and we got some positive support, that going this detailed into the process that we needed to come to the planning board. I think the, the, the park itself has been made a hair smaller than what we originally wanted because of the topography of the land. And we wanna with, work with the Conservation Agent and the Conservation Commission. We are keeping part of it natural. The other issue that has been brought up is keeping it clean and being able to not just have the, the, the refuge from the animals just go straight into the ground and out into the wetlands. So that's why you have the, the base and the rice stone in the two areas that are there. The other issue and why it's been, why we're bringing it forward now is the Stanton Foundation is about to shut down. And a year and a half ago, uh, we had thought to put this on the back burner as a town project. And we were, and it was notified that the Stanton Foundation will stop granting dog park funds in 2025. If we can move this project forward, we will possibly be one of the last commi, communities to get the foundation money. And right now, it's about half the cost of this dog park. We are hoping to get about $225,000 to $250,000 from the Stanton Foundation to help pay for this dog park. The other portion, CPC, was very kind. They reached out to us and they say, hey, we hear you're working on a dog park. We sat before them probably about a year ago and I think at Fall Town Meeting last year, the CPC said, we support this, here's the funding for it. So again, I, I, you know, I hear what you're saying, that you feel like you wanted to be involved sooner. And all I wanna do is give you that history, but also let you know that, I, I don't like saying this, but we're in our time crunch, so...
Again, every town project comes to us, so far, on my personal time on this planning board. I have yet to hear a town project where we don't get the message that this has been sort of pre, pre-vetted, there's nothing for us to worry about and there's no time, but to say yes.
So, so I'm just kinda, I'm gonna comment, I'm gonna comment on that. I'm just speaking, speaking on this project.
Okay, let's, let's, um, control the conversation a little bit here, so...
That's all I have to, if you have any other questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them.
Thank, thank, thank you.
As well as other members.
Okay, do you have a, a short comment?
I will say that if, if we're stuck with this, because it sounds like we're stuck with this. To me, it seems like we should be minimizing the parking lot. There's no need for it, it's not required by the grant. And I think we should do everything we can to maximize tree coverage and not get rid of so many trees.
Okay, is, any other comments from the board?
Yeah.
Um, and I, so the, I, I definitely have heartburn with paving paradise. I mean, let's face it, that's what it's, and, and we, it does not require by the grant. So I, I, there needs to be at least a conversation about that. But I also think, I mean, this board, I, I don't wanna entirely speak for the board, but I've been on conversations about trees. Every time trees come up, we all say we care about trees. So I feel like part of this, um, discussion has to be what, it's a town project. Where is the town gonna mitigate and plant some trees? We can't keep taking down trees and not doing something to replace them. And I, I don't think we're asking, I'm personally not asking to go out and count tree for tree. I know that's not practical, but to do nothing is not acceptable. It's not, it's not acceptable to do nothing to mitigate that.
I just want to circle back because, uh, several things can be true at the same time. And I, I, this doesn't happen very often. I, I think Anna made a, a very good presentation of, 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 of some facts that, that are, that should be considered and Kate just rounded it up. I, I think what, uh, I, I think the idea of the dog park and it's been, you know, discussed and everything, it's great. And, and I think there's, there's a lot that probably is gonna be very successful. But what, when I started talking about what we usually request from private developers. And, uh, and then we had the sustainability, no, the Sustainability Committee coming with a, with a tree ordinance that we discussed several times. One of the discussions was, okay, so everything we're gonna require from citizens, uh, from the residents of Ashland is going to be required for the town. And like, no, no, the town would have an exception. I objected to that. So i- i- it's more like, like a philosophical point of, I, I think that, that the project is great, but, but I think that there is, that, that, there is a base requirement that we ask for, for the residents that the town should be, should be held to the same way. If it's a tree or tree replacement, I think it's logical to ask that the town, let's see how many trees are gonna take. Because on all of the projects, when they come up and say, we're gonna take some trees, we are the first ones to take, you have to put twice or three times the amount of trees you're taking out. So I think it's fair to ask the town to, to, to do their, put their share on, on what we ask the residents to do, in fairness. So if there's a chance that, that we don't have to pave this up, I get it that it's easier to plow and, and maintain, that's better for, for the maintenance folks. If, if, if it could be done in a, in a more natural way, I, I would be happier. But, but I think in, in, in general, in a general sense, the things that we, uh, ask the residents or private citizens to, to, to provide on projects and landscaping wise or drainage or, or parking, should, we should, we should be consistent. Debra?
I think Anna said it very well. Not sure how much more I can add to what we just heard because when this presentation started, um, I was just surprised at the location that this was chosen. Thank you, Yolanda, for the history because I think that was truly important to understand that you have visited other sites and then you've landed with it. What I was surprised is the community supporting the location and saying, let's clear cut all these trees and create a dog park, which just was contradicting to all that we've been hearing for all the other projects that's been coming to the board. And I'm also curious about how this small 1.47 acre of land really works with the bigger scheme of things of our comprehensive plan. What is, what is planned for that kind of, that location? How does this really work? There's no residential neighborhood as such for this dog park? What is that bigger scheme of things happening? And I'm curious if there was any thought or any conversations about how this ties to your bigger scheme of things of comprehensive plan.
Can I answer? Okay. So as part of an open space and rec plan that was worked on back in 2017, there was discussion about people wanting a dog park here in Ashland. Uh, the current comprehensive plan, we haven't gotten into the details, details of what is going to be built once we have the comprehensive plan completed. As we speak to the community, we've gone out in farmers markets numerous times in talking about the dog park, we've had fundraisers about the dog park. A lot of that happened before the pandemic, but there was huge support. We had members of our dog park committee at the farmer's market this spring, um, this summer. And again, when people, people who own dogs and even people who no longer own dogs but who used to own dogs, who heard about this and have supported it, have asked about it. In regards to the parking lot, one of the reasons, another reasons we're having it paved is this is, and it has to be an ADA compliant park. Meaning if I am someone in a wheelchair and I wanna take my dog to a dog park, I have to be able to park my car, take my wheelchair and go to the dog park. So I think that's one of the other reasons it's paved. And, you know, I, I'm all for sustainability and trying to use surfaces that are, that are more permeable. But as we know, sometimes those cost more. So because of our stormwater requirements here in town, we have done what we, you know, working with our developers and our designers to do things to mitigate that stormwater issue. We can add more plantings. If you're concerned about the number of trees that are being removed, we can possibly add more at the front. But again, part of what the Stanton Grant requires in regards to the area for the dogs is as flat and as clear an area as possible. And if you look at the plan, there's a good quarter of it that we're not taking as many trees down. We're only gonna take some of the smaller trees down.
Alright, thank you.
I mean, not...
We have another speaker.
Okay, sorry.
Mike, you are coming to speak, right?
Yes, I am, but I wanna make sure this is open for public comment. Okay, thank you. Mark DeSoni, 119 Vane Street. I'm on the fence about this and I'm not fully against it and I'm not fully for it. I asked a question at the conservation meeting one time and I couldn't get an answer about the, uh, any structures that are gonna be built there. That's, has nothing to do with here for this. My question would be, it's town land, yes. How much of the town is going to take responsibility? And would it take away from their rest of the town's responsibilities in case anything happens, like winter, that happened, that's coming up soon and all that? And the year after it's open, is that gonna be taken priority? Or is it gonna be as duly noted to do? Because it's off the side of a road and it's on town land, which means town is gonna be responsible for care and custody of it. How does that wanna work?
Sounds like Yolanda can answer that question for you.
So as part of our work with the Conservation Commission and Conservation Agent is we have been required to create what's called a maintenance plan. And as part of that maintenance plan, uh, the park itself will be taken care of by volunteers. And we have a number of people who have spoken to us and said, once the, the park is up and running, when they bring their dog there, they're willing to help out as well as, uh, you know, residents who use the park will help take care of it. We've worked with Public Works, they'll plow it in the winter and it'll be the last priority of plowing. There's also been conversation that depending on weather, we may close the park so that it doesn't get tore up as much. Otherwise, the maintenance in, inside the chain link fence, picking up the poop, potentially replacing mulch, potentially raking out piece, the, the, the rice stone is necessary. We have a maintenance plan where volunteers will go and make sure that the poop bags are removed from inside of the park and put outside in a, in a, in a barrel that the D P W would pick up, just like they pick up, um, the trash from different parks in town. It's not more or less of a responsibility on the residents unless you are taking your dog there and want to be part of maintaining this dog park. And, um, there was another question about what else is in that neighborhood? So right now, it is just, if you're going up Memorial Drive, we have the trail. Trolley Brook Trail is there. And also, uh, we've just, uh, at our select board meeting, we were given a presentation by the Metro West YMCA. So between the Dunkin' Donuts and the trail, the new Metro West YMCA is going in there. And, you know, they know about the potential of the dog park and it's one of those things that they are gonna connect trails so that people can leave the Y, go to the trail and go to the, you know. So it's, it's gonna be a connected area. And again, we've heard from people that they like the idea of it being there. It was talked, well, maybe don't add parking. One of the issues is, we had potentially said, well, okay, we won't... One of the issues is, we had potentially said, well, okay, we won't have a parking lot because there's the school across the street, but they didn't want us to use their area as a parking lot. And because of the size of the park and the ADA compliance is, again, some of the reasoning why we're going with a paved parking lot for the dog park, just for the dog park. And again, that's just some of the rationale behind that. So I don't know if that helps, but thank you.
Thank you. Jen?
Yeah, Jen Ball, but before Jen speaks, I just wanted to make note that this project does require design review. So any comment from Marcelo of that stormwater runoff into that basin or trees, we do have to make a memo regarding design review comments for the design review committee. So with that said, Jen Ball, you have your hand up, so please unmute yourself.
Yeah, so I just wanted to also just follow up on Yolanda's comments. As part of our funding mechanism through CPC, I believe that the motion had us having a maintenance plan. So we've been working on that with the committee, and that would be signed so that we'd have the shared maintenance, to Mark's point about sort of priority. I think Yolanda outlined most of all those points. And I think, you know, for, for plowing, it would be, we would still do, you know, streets, school, schools, municipal buildings, sidewalks, and then some of the other parks, and then dog parks. So that's the, it's, it's on a tertiary sort of priority list for them. So, you know, two or three days after a storm.
All right, thanks, Jen. Mark, do you have another comment?
Yes, I do. It's kind of gave me a quarter of an answer about that. But still, it's going to be your responsibility of the towns, maintenance, and the Public Works people. You've got to spread them out to do something that has nothing to do with the residents. And the residents are more important than what the dogs would be at, at this moment in winter. And I'm only talking winter season when the snow is there, and they've got to do the roads and back roads and stuff like that. So the residents would need, get more of a say on what the roads should be like that the dog happened to find land to poop on. Because dogs don't work, the residents do, and they need to get out to do that, and the roads needs to be done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. This obviously has, you know, come up through CPC when they were asking for funding. I believe then it went to town meeting about that funding. Was that a year ago?
Yeah.
So it, it has been out there. And I, I don't see the problem that some of you are seeing. And maybe because I have disagreements about some of this as well, and I'll kind of repeat some of, some of my points on having to do with the trees, because I agree too, as we've discussed before. No, you're not going to find a person in Ashland that says, I hate trees, let's take them all down. Maybe in the fall when they're covering your leaves with, yard with leaves, maybe, yes. But if you start to say, okay, trees or YMCA, trees or new school, trees or dog park, you're probably going to be taking some of those trees out. Trees in themselves, no one wants to get rid of. But we, we have other things that we use and want in our lives as well. And some of those, you have to take some trees out to create them. And sometimes frankly, there's not a, a good place to put them, if there is in town. But it would be putting them in someplace that's an open field, but we use those open fields as well, right? So it'd be great if we can plant them somewhere else, but we would have to figure out where is open space without trees that we don't use for something else. Personally, I think this is a good site. It's going to be tucked in between the YMCA and the Trolley Brook Trail and, and the solar field, right? In that little piece of land, and there's a lot of other still forested area behind it that's going to remain forested area. I think that it, it would be great if they become some kind of solid permeal, permeable paver that would allow that water to seep into the ground, but it, it does need to be accessible. I remember that conversation with the CPC. And also, the big point, the big thing is not allowing the, the water to leave the site. And it's not. It's just going a few feet over and then soaking into the ground that way. As far as the dogs got, I, I have a dog too, that loves to, to run. This is a completely, loves to go in the state park. This is a completely different environment for that. This is, this is about socializing and playing, where the state park might be really about being with your owner. This isn't about being with your owner dog parts, this is about being with other dogs, where the owners are being with other owners and the dogs are being with other dogs. And while that state park is great, and, and while you might need some shade, definitely when you have those 90 degree days, I can tell you on a day like today, you're really looking to get out in the sunny parts where there's, where there's no trees and be able to warm up a little bit. So I think there's, it's about looking at both sides of this. And I think that this is something, a, a dog park is, is something that a community of our size, frankly, I think people have been wanting it for a long time, both not only dog owners to, to be able to go someplace with their dogs, but people in the state park who would rather have as many dogs as possible get out of the state park. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it'll certainly alleviate, I, I would think, some of the, some of the congestion. I'm not saying this is perfect, and I think it's great to go to the design review committee, get some other ideas about plantings. Are there a few more trees that could be saved in a more wooded area? What's the downside to that? But, but otherwise, I, I think this is a, I think it's a good area for it. I'm, I'm surprised at the, the feedback, actually. So that's my statement on it. If there's any other comments from the board, we'll take them. If there's any other comments from the public, we'll take them. But obviously, this will have to go to the design review-
So is there any way, like, people want the dog park. I don't have a dog anymore. I think the dog park having, Ashland's great. Is there any way, because they're, like, that, that drainage is a lot of money and work and grading, and like comparing that to some kind of permeable pavement. And I just wish, I want, I want our town to like, not always say, next time, right? It's expensive. Like, I want us to at least really, really, really consider that. And like, that's the town that we say, we're a green community, we have this, like, net zero by 2030, and we always keep kicking the can. And I, I, I'd like to at least try to get what that cost difference is. And it shouldn't, like, cost is important, right? It's public, public and private, but like, I want us to have values. I want us to live the values we say. And it's kind of frustrating to get those kicked to the side, right? About permeable paving and about tree replacement. I do not think they all have to be on the site. I, I cannot believe that there's no places that need trees in town. Or what if we said the trees and you offered, like, there's, whatever, somebody wants a tree in their yard that replaced? Like, I, I think we, like, we hear over and over again to our community, sustainability, I, I think I probably am more passionate now, being part of the comprehensive plan, that came out very clear in those surveys. So I just, I just, I just hope we can do better, I think. And then I have comments, so I, we started our project checklist, there was a technical review meeting. Do you have the date? And then we didn't get a memo yet, are we getting a memo?
You know what, I think that's something, I'll circulate that out. I think it's just something that we forgot to add into the package tonight, but we'll take care of it with a memo, and we'll circulate that out. With a date off the top of my head, I do not recall.
So that, and then I'm just keeping the notes. It's, so technical review, we said yes, it goes to design review. Conservation, yes. I, I don't know that we necessarily need, it's always us parallel making sure it's covered. It sounds like it is, but if we want that. I, I'm not sure we need traffic, but I'm kind of just going through our list, if anyone thinks anything about traffic there.
I mean, we can think about that as we talk about parking, since we're talking about parking.
Yeah, no, I'm just going, the, I guess if the drainage got through conservation, it does not need to go to GCG, but I, I don't know, because we usually often, every time, have GCG look at drainage calculations.
If, if the board would like, we can send it to GCG. You know, you know, Becca is the most thorough conservation agent in the state of Massachusetts. And I can say that she's reviewed it, she's worked with myself and Michael to design this plan, and, and there seems to be no red flag at this point.
And I'm kind of just going through, so it's, I, I would just put no, and if that's what we're saying, not needed third-party review.
I mean, it depends how we all feel about the parking. I, I do have three comments, and I don't know if you want to keep going through this, Kate?
I'm just trying to, it, sustainability checklist, they, for me, kind of talked about. That's it on this list, so if we, those are the things.
I, I mean, I'll say as a dog owner, I've been hearing a lot about a dog park, and I've been very excited. But not once did anyone say, oh, it's going to be on a wooded surface with tree removal. I honestly imagined it would be natural whenever I heard about it. That was my assumption. So unless we've done a survey of people who've been excited about it, I don't think I'm the only one who would be like, really? That's what we're doing? I, I will say that, you know, I'm not an ADA expert, but what I'm finding online really quickly, the ADA does not require paved for ADA compliance. You can have gravel surfaces. It has to be firm, stable, and slip resistant. And apparently gravel is one way to do it, although it's technical and tricky. But the idea that it has to be paved to be ADA compliant seems to be false, although, again, I'm not an expert in ADA compliance, and I don't think any of us are. So we could maybe get a legal opinion if someone wants to explore that. But I'm not seeing any kind of understanding that you can't be ADA compliant. In fact, I've been to, I believe, municipally owned or nonprofit owned or perhaps even state-owned properties where there is no paved parking lot. So it'd be shocking to me if that's considered against federal law. The other thing I'll say is ultimately, there is a parking within distance. And while someone at the school may not like the idea, that is part of our resource as the public. And so I think that is a natural solution, to have some gravel, that more natural space. And if people want to use a parking lot, it's not far.
Other comments from the board?
Yeah, there's two people, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was going to get the board first.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Okay, then I'll take the comments online.
First with their hand raised, Michael, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, so it's a good, healthy discussion, thank you. I, I just wanted to add a little bit of, I, I'm going to make two comments, well, three now that we talked about ADA in reverse order. So I, I actually am an expert on handicap accessibility, and, and I'm the town's consultant. So I think you can count on me, not just as an advocate, you know, on, working on behalf of the dog park, but for, for the town as well. It, it's true that it, it is not a technical requirement of the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board to have a paved parking lot. They do, they require a, a stable surface. I have never done a public parking lot that hasn't had paved handicap spaces. I just haven't done it, and I would be, I would have to think about putting my stamp on a plan that just had gravel parking for handicap access. So I'll just, I'll, I'll leave that there. For the issue of permeable paving, and I can, we, I can talk with Nick and the civil team about this offline, but in New England, we typically don't do permeable paving for vehicular spaces because they tend to get clogged with salt and sand, and they do become a maintenance issue. They have to be vacuumed by a special equipment, a special truck. I don't know that Ashland has that, or you would have to contract it out. So we do permeable paving all the time for pedestrian spaces because it doesn't have that, the amount of grit that you would get from tires and, and, and salt and sand. And then I'll say the last thing, and I'm going to share my screen one more time. Just to give you a little context, this is a park in Danvers that we did, which is almost kind of the same approach that we're, we would like to do in Ashland, which is half of it is this open area, and here you could see that rice stone again and the concrete paving. And, and this is the wooded area. This was the area that was to be preserved. So I did this probably, I want to say 10 years ago, and this is what it looks like this year. This used to be a fully wooded area, and you can see what happened is that, you know, we let the dogs back there, and all of a sudden, they're trampling on, on the roots. You start to get exposed roots and exposed stone here, and you start to get erosion. And this is a very flat site. What we have in Ashland is not even this flat in the wooded area. So I get a little bit concerned about preserving more areas of where there are trees and, and what happens to that over the long term. That said, you know, we certainly can look at things like adding more trees, you know, in, in and around the site, or maybe even inside the rice stone area to provide a little more shade. You know, there are certain things, like, we can, we can sharpen our pencil and kind of go back and look at the design of this to try and mitigate some of these concerns. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I like that approach. I, I, I think what's being proposed is reasonable. I think they should go to design review, and we should ask for, especially the planting part, because they are, there's more experts there than, than we are on, on that, and just to hear their opinion. But, but I think the, the idea of, of maybe just, of course, this was our first pass without this feedback, but maybe some trees can be left or introduced, I think will make it better.
I agree. I think there's a, there's a, there's, there's a middle ground here. And I think that's any time you look at sustainability, it's that choice between, do I cut my trees down so the solar panels work?
Yeah, exactly.
You know?
And, and like you said-
There are choices to make.
There's choices to make, and of course, it's a dog park, so it's, it's not like the YMCA, right? It's a different kind of level of choice. But, but, but it goes back to what we said before, like, everybody gets really excited when they're going to put a new regulation to get the citizens or the residents to comply with this and that, and then we're going to force them to do. But then when it's the town, it's kind of different. So I, I think this approach would, would get a more balanced kind of side that, that incorporates a little bit more of a natural-
I think you want to be careful, though, like, even when we're talking about the, the public-private, I mean, I guess the, the two buildings we've been doing. We did, where the school and the public safety building, which are both public buildings, and a, a lot of trees had to come down for those projects to get them in, right?
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, more trees, like I said, than we, than obvious, like, I'm not sure we'd have space to replace them. Maybe if you're giving away to private citizens that were, you know, putting them in their yards.
Or, or medians on the streets, like we've talked about before.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think that also, you know, we, we, we were talking about a tree bylaw, and I think, you know, it wasn't clear coming out of that conversation if those trees can be replaced one to one, right? And how practical that, that actually was. So that, I would just want to make that comment. I think Jen Ball has been waiting to speak.
Can I speak?
Hi. Um, so thank you, can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay. So thank you for all your comments. Just to sort of build off what Michael was talking about, I mean, I think the other piece, so I think to Anna's comments about sort of the envisioning as natural as possible, that's certainly something that the dog park committee had also hoped for. And so trying to find the balance between the, the, the topography and, and what we have to work with, with the site, but then also with the grant requirements. And again, with, you know, with ADA compliance, and again, you are correct in the fact that, like, you do not have to have a paved site. However, we do still also have to think about the capacity to maintain that with our current staffing levels. And so, you know, the gravel oftentimes does become rutted. We have some issues with the Riverwalk at Ponderosa. We tried that, stone dust with basically a polymer that was supposed to kind of keep it all glued together and be compacted. But with a good, with a good rainstorm, you end up with a lot of divots and you have some issues. And so just making sure, we can certainly look at it, but we just have to also think about long-term maintenance. That was one of the pushbacks, I think, from CPC, is to really think about how we keep this, because obviously, we can't use that type of funding for maintenance in future years. So again, I think it's like a real balancing act. I completely understand your points. A real balancing act of sort of, you know, all the requirements that we're trying to meet.
All right, Anna.
I mean, I, I definitely appreciate that. I think that that's the nature of this kind of work, right? Everybody wants something, and it's hard to make everyone happy and find a perfect balance. And we got to sort of weigh our values, I suppose. You know, I'm thinking about ADA compliance. Is there a way to make that parking lot truly for ADA compliance alone? And allow handicapped spaces, but the rest of it is gravel? Is there a way to make that parking lot way smaller, but allowing a handicap van to get there? And maybe those of us who, who don't require that can actually use the school parking lot and walk? How, how, there's so many different ways to approach it without necessarily just aiming for, frankly, efficiency and cheapness for the sake of a grant that we now have a deadline of a month. So to me, that makes me really uncomfortable when we're being asked as a planning board to figure out those really tough balancing, design-related, therefore we have jurisdiction decisions, with so little time to do the right thing. with so little time to do the right thing. It frankly makes me really uncomfortable because I very much appreciate that a lot of people have already put a lot of thought into it and have done their very best to make lots of people happy. So by the time it comes to us, we're between a rock and a hard place, or gravel and pavement. And, and it's very difficult to, to be helpful.
I just want to also just make one more quick, just for the parking across the street. That isn't actually a parking lot, so there is no curb cut. It's like, people have just sort of parked there on the field. I've talked to the school department. They potentially have future expansion plans for that, that it would no longer have ability to park. So it wasn't just like, no, you guys can't park here, that's not convenient for us. They're planning for future sort of expansion on their campus. And so it is part of the school's property.
I think it's also frankly important to have, even if you're not ADA, to have parking available for older residents and residents with young children and who might have a hard time parking far away and yet making it to the, to the dog park. So I think there's, there's again, a variety of citizens and a variety of residents we need to, to think about here. Is, I see Jen is, do you have your hand up again, Jen? Okay, so.
No.
I think we want to maybe take this one comment, but then look to see if we're just ready to send it to design review. If we want to create a memo about that, maybe we do to summarize this conversation. And then let, let design review committee take a look at it. So it looks like Helen.
So yes, we have one hand up, Ms. Helen Nicole. Helen, I'm going to ask you to unmute and introduce yourself with your name and address. You are now unmuted.
Elliot Circle. So basically, Trish just made my whole point because I, I wasn't really exactly sure where that parking across the street was. But I did want to mention that for older people, especially for older people who may not be in possession of a handicap park or going that far with a dog and across the road, especially in the wintertime, might be very, very hazardous and actually a problem for them to be able to do that. So I just wanted people to take that in consideration when they were thinking about that. That, that was my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's look at creating one of our typical memos about this, obviously related to the relevant issues. The things we wanted to, would want them to look at. That would include, obviously, the main one is vegetation, but it could also, vegetation, water runoff.
Do we want to explore the idea of designing that parking lot slightly differently so it's not so much pavement?
Well, I think we'll, we'll, we'll put, obviously, the, the paving, they should, they should, that's part of what they look at anyway, but they can look at the paving.
We're not sure they are. I mean, we can tell them to. I want to make sure we're agreeing to tell them to look at the pavement as a concept.
We can, we can put it on there.
Is there a way to find a middle ground where part of that is gravel and part of it is pavement? Minimize some of the pavement.
I, I'm kind of more in an agreement with you than not, Anna, but I don't think that's practical in a, in a parking lot of this size. I think once you have a construction of, it's, it's a very small lot. I'm not sure that that would be, but they, they should look, maybe they have good ideas. I mean, I.
Let's explore it. It may, it may not be worth it. It may not, it may be more worthwhile to save some of the trees and, and add plantings than it is to care about the parking lot.
I agree with that.
But I say add it to their list.
I mean.
I agree, and I was confident with the engineer that things will be looked at based on the conversation. So I think we're in pretty good shape that way.
Because you're talking about one accessible spot if you have 20 cars. You're literally talking about one accessible.
Yeah, no, we may be stuck with the parking lot. But my question is, let's explore whether we're stuck with the parking lot.
If there is other mediums of kind of lessening the parking pact.
Okay, so we will be looking at, I don't know when the design review committee meets next.
So I'm gonna work with Alvaro, and obviously, we'll iron that out. The planning board has one meeting in December. We could always schedule another meeting in December if I pull up my calendar. Obviously, the, the next meeting for the planning board is going to be on the 28th of November. We will not be meeting, that is Thanksgiving. With that said, our next meeting in December would be the 12th at this point. And, and I'm confident that the design review committee could meet between now and then to discuss this.
Yeah, so why don't we, so we should then, we, we should move it to the, we will be moving to the 12th.
Yes.
The 12th of December?
Yes.
Unless, unless for any reason, I think two weeks is, actually puts us at December 5th. We could, if we would rather go December 5th.
Well, so the shot clock on, I believe, if I did this right, is March 4th of 2025. We, we are hearing that that's not practical. I'm just saying. So if we push that in December, that, that is it. That's the one meeting, say we're happy, and I guess.
Because that depends on the grant, right?
Yeah, no, I get it. That's what I'm talking about. But it's kind of the same thing, like, do we want to give us just one meeting for MBTA zoning before the town meeting? Like, I feel like we should try to possibly have another one so then there's the 12th that can happen for or do something. Because otherwise, like, we don't really need to talk about it.
We could hold the meeting on the 5th, and we could obviously invite the design review committee. We could have a joint meeting. It's not out of the realm of possibility.
I think that's fine, but that would be fine. But I, I don't think we're talking about a very complicated project here.
I don't think so either.
I think if the design review is gonna have a look at the few items, it's like three items.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see why we could not bring it to the next meeting and be done with.
But, but where do people sit? I'm thinking about for other reasons as well, just looking at our schedules quick. Where do people sit for December 5th? Would everyone be around at that time?
And the 12th? Both for days, right?
We would all, I think.
Well, I think we'd go the 5th, and then would, and then see if what we have for the 12th or then, or the 19th or another, you know.
That's fine for me.
Because right now, we would only be meeting now and once in December, and we would be done for the year. If we move it to the 5th, we at least have the possibility for fitting in something quick if we need to. Was that?
I have a potential trip, but it's not confirmed yet, so.
Okay.
In essence, it's possible.
I think the 5th is fine.
So look, look at the 50, but do you think the 5th is good for you?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but you said that that would be as a tentative, depending on the agenda?
Well, we have to continue this to a date, and so I was looking to continue it, if possible, to December 5th. And let's take that earlier date, and if we get our work done, we get it done. But if we don't, we have opportunity to have that second meeting if things aren't resolved. We're not under the same pressure, yet not throwing away this potential grant money, which I think would be really stupid of us to do. So, okay. So do I have a motion to continue this until December 5th? Oh, wait. Oh, sorry.
Michael, just, just to make note, Michael, do you think you're free on the 5th to join the next planning board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry for not including you on that one.
No, good, good call.
I'll make a motion to move the site plan review and design plan review of the Dog Park project to December 5th.
All right, that's your second. Okay, and a roll call vote?
Deepavangitai.
Anna Tassmaniskey, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Do we have, sir, anyone, well, I guess, does anyone that wants to help put together this memo? I always like a second pair of ayes on it. Usually, it's, it's been Marcelo typically, unless anyone else. Okay, everyone's okay with Marcelo? All right. So put something together, and we'll get that to the design review committee. All right. Thank you, everyone from Dog Park.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is the MBTA community's question and answer. But I think, I think we have some, I, I think if I'm, if I'm right in understanding that you had come for the, our agenda item about the discussion of the 40B project. Is, is that right? Right, and in general, I apologize, that's on our, that's on our agenda because we want it on our agenda in case we want to discuss it at any time. So we don't have anything specific about that, but we'd be happy to hear your comments and answer any questions you have about it before we go to our MBTA agenda item. Okay.
Hi, Paul Flaherty. I own the property adjacent to this project at 63 Waverly Street. I was a longtime Ashland resident, went to high school with Mark. And this, the property that we own, small residential property, was my grandmother's house. Our family's been there for a long time. I've owned it since 1981, lived there for a while. And we have now three apartments there, which we've been renting over the years. We have, two of them are occupied by family members, but, you know, so we, we try to help out the family. And the project, I understand it's something that's needed in the area. But we're at the end of the property that has a 25-foot buffer zone. So we have an existing one-story residential house at this wall. And at the door is going to be a five-story apartment building 25 feet away. Doesn't seem acceptable, in my humble opinion. I, I opposed the change to the zoning at the time, I believe it was 2007, for this specific reason. And was assured by the planning board at that time that they would never let anything of that size be built that close to a, a existing residential property. But this is where we stand now. So I'm hoping that the developers of the project could cooperate in some manner to maybe give us a little bit more space, you know, be good neighbors like they say they want to be. But I believe we're the only ones really being affected much by this project. So that's where we stand, and I just want, you know, whenever, when something's being discussed about this project, I just want to be here to hear it and, you know, be able to say my piece.
Yeah, so this project, and Peter can jump in here, but this project that you're talking about is a 40B project?
Yes.
And that means that it does not come before the planning board?
It does not.
It does not. That means it, it will be going in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Ashland. I don't know what the schedule of that is. It, it, they have meetings just like we do, though they have been still all online, I think they are. I don't know how they'll do it for these projects coming up. But Peter, do you know more about that?
Yeah, so I can tell you, Tricia is correct. All 40Bs throughout the state go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, what's known as a comprehensive permit, right? 40B law enacted in 1969, right after the Fair Housing Market Act, the Fair Housing Act. That, that's kind of the process it does take, right? Paul, you and I have spoken a couple times. I know I sent the email and I connected you with Mass Housing. So at this point, Mass Housing did issue a letter of eligibility, which was issued to 61 Waverly Street and also 10 to 60 Main Street.
Okay.
And that happened at, geez, at this point, maybe a month and a half ago, two months ago. I can tell you, and I, I can tell you again, that regarding 61 Waverly Street, the applicant has not signaled to us when he, and when he plans to file his full application for that comprehensive permit.
But that application does not go before the planning board?
It will not come in front of this planning board. It will go in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I can tell you right now, you is the butter, and if you are on the, you will be legally noticed when that goes out. I think if you are the owner on the tax record, you will receive a notice. Obviously, you are within three of your feet. And obviously, you and I have been communicating over the last couple of months. With that said, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. The planning board, more than likely, like all towns and committee, all boards and committees, will be asked to maybe submit a letter of their opinion and/or a memo stating their opinion on the project or what should be looked at. That will be done, and I think that's why you'll see into the future that you'll see comments or this is an agenda item on the planning boards.
Okay, so I should be looking at the zoning boards and meetings?
Meeting, yeah, and myself, and obviously, the biggest, the best thing to do, Paul, is to.
To stay in touch.
Stay in touch with me. I can tell you right now, that letter of eligibility that Mass Housing issued about a month and a half ago, two months ago, that's good for two years, right? That's, that's almost like a live permit that the planning board would issue, right? So that applicant really has two years to file a full application with us. After Mass Housing did issue that letter, I reached out to open the lines of communication, you know, softly, with the applicant, and they signaled, we'll get around to it when we get around to it.
Yeah, they didn't seem too interested in any sort of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are the laptop speakers on?
Oh. Okay, yeah, but mine's muted, I think. Thank you.
I think it might be you, Peter. I think your laptop's speakers are working.
Yeah, my volume's off. I don't know.
It's, the mic's muted. I'm looking for the. Yeah.
I would encourage you while you're, I was gonna say while we're figuring that out, just to when those meetings start. The process is probably going to be long, it's going to be arduous, and to come anyway.
Okay, yes. I mean, they're open meetings.
Yeah.
And I'll stay in touch with Peter.
It'll probably be in the newsletter that Michael puts online. It should be everywhere that those meetings are happening, but.
Are you connected to the newsletter, Paul?
I am not.
Okay, that's you, the town managers, to, through our Ashland Town website, you can sign up for the newsletter.
Okay, should I come in to sign up with someone?
It's all online.
All online?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can find it. And I will say that it's been discussed internally that the Zoning Board of Appeals, not internally, it's been discussed with the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, that they will be coming back in person. And so when these 40Bs come in, since the pandemic, they've stayed virtual. That will change, that will shift, and that will be, they will be then coming back into either, most likely, this meeting room. And if there's a large crowd in it, this, this.
Probably not, I think I'm, I'm the only one that cares.
Well, so here's the thing, you came to us, other than pointing it towards other people, I think we can take some responsibility. And I can tell you that when my, when we draft the letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I will, I will suggest to this planning board that we request a buffer zone for you or some trees be planted.
Well, trees.
Or not. This is something that you.
Not really room for trees.
There may not be room, but there, there may be room on their side of the property to plant some trees to create a buffer for you that's visual. Because if you have a five-story building you're staring at, maybe that can be the buffer that they create. And so these are some of the things that we can potentially request so that you're not staring at a building.
I wouldn't mind staring at a building that's a little bit further away.
Or if they can't move it.
And it's right to the south, so we will be in the shadow the entire winter. But anyways.
Understood, so.
I'll, I'll just stay on top of it. Thank you for your cooperation, and good luck with everything.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
I see one hand raised, Ms. Joan Gaffredi. Ms. Joan, I'm gonna ask, excuse me, Ms. Ms. Gaffredi, I'm gonna ask you to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Joan Gaffredi, One Shore Road, on the Historical Commission, but speaking as an independent resident. I have a question about the, the, and there's something that I'm looking at the, the Mill Building and the 61 Waverly Street. I noticed in their apartments that, I think none of us really believe they're affordable, but given the fact that that's what they're called, I'll use that as the example. So when you compare the affordable versus the market, I see that it actually ends up, it, it, the way I looked at it, and I think maybe I'm wrong, and so I'm asking you this question, is that the, it, the market does not require, does not pay any utilities, and the affordables do pay utilities. And when you add the utilities in, the affordables become more expensive than the market. But then I see a note down there that says utility, utilities to be paid by tenants. So I'm just wondering, it's, both, both projects have that issue. So I'm just wondering if I'm, if I'm crazy or if that's something that could be looked at and, and could let me know if, if that's. and, and you could let me know if, if that's, if I'm correct, or if it's, or, and otherwise, regardless, I think that that's a very small difference between affordable and market, when you look at the, at the number, so.
It's a great question. I don't know if I have the answer specifically regarding the, the payment of utilities. I will say, I do know that those affordable rates are dictated by the state, and those are annually analyzed by the, by the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development. So the town does not really have any control over the quote-unquote affordable units. That's dictated from the state.
No, I, yeah, I, I understand, I agree with you, but I'm just wondering whether the developers are using some kind of a way around it by having the affordables pay the utilities and the market rate not. That was, that's really my question, so. Thank you.
I, yeah, I, I don't think I have any answer, I, I don't think I have the knowledge to, at this point in time, to answer that question directly.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the MBTA communities. And I don't think there's really, again, we're kind of, our agenda has kind of become this really, really long list of things that we should do. And, and we, you know, don't generally get there, but maybe after the new year, when some of these things are off the list. So MBTA communities, what, what, what we had intended for this meeting is that in, in your, and we'll bring, can you bring it up?
Yep.
I did make a very few tweaks, but they're all graphic. So we can use this one. So I think in number one, there's both the slides, you'll see the pages of the slides. This is my draft slide presentation, which I'll, maybe I'll be able to go to the microphone, and can I do that? Go to the microphone and like a, I won't be able to get my, all my thoughts together. And then after that, there's this frequently asked questions sheet. So what, Anna had missed that meeting, so she listened to the meeting, and she wrote down the questions that people had asked at our, at our public hearing. Most of them, but not all of them, were really appropriate to be a part of this document, which is the frequently asked questions about MBTA. We have to be careful because we, it has to be kind of a just a factual, kind of very neutral document. So first, that list of questions that Anna had written down went to Peter and Alvaro, and they filled in the factual, kind of the factual answers to those questions as best they could. Then that document went to Amanda, who insisted that she would be bored and that she would need something to do. So I sent it to her, she still wanted to do it, so she went through it and kind of massaged it a bit, and then it came back to me. And then, and I did the same thing, kind of massaging it, the things that I felt as being on the committee for this long, we really needed people to look, know, things I thought were unclear or not complete. So that's what this is. Just so you know, the, both the presentation, do I still have Jen on there? No, she left. Both the presentation and this frequently asked questions document, I need to give to Jen and to Adam Schuster on, by Saturday, or on Saturday, because that's the timeline, they need it before town meeting. So, oh, and after that, in the book also is this chart, which compares the MBTA communities to forty-B projects. That's not something I obviously want to get into in my presentation, because it's supposed to be about MBTA. But people keep getting confused about it, so there's this sheet, and I kind of assume in the question and answer period at town meeting, some stuff will come up. Peter, are you gonna be at town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So I assume between you and Michael, you'll be handling that stuff that is out of the realm of the working group, which is the realm I want to stay in. So-
Is it November sixteenth, this town meeting, just so those of us who want to come?
It's nineteenth.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday the nineteenth.
Be there, be square.
I actually, I'm glad you mentioned about getting it to Adam, and I, it, it's obviously sounds in the works, but I think if you're doing a presentation, you technically also have to ask.
Yeah, I-
I know, it's a reality, but-
I talked to him, I know him, I talked to him. I was concerned about the amount of time that we needed to present, because usually he's like, you get this much. He realizes the importance of this, so I, I think he, we talked about maybe around ten minutes of presenting. Personally, I feel that after that, you, people start to not be able to follow, so I'm trying to keep it basic, and then other things will be picked up in the questions and answers. So what I thought I could do is just go through the slides. I'm not going to be perfect in how, it won't be exactly like town meeting. I haven't practiced at all. I actually will, because I used to do speech contests, and that's how I got it right when I practiced. So I'll probably practice a little bit to make sure I get it all on ten minutes. But if you see something that, Trish, that isn't clear, in fact, I'm gonna take my slides up there. Or you can make notes on your slides, too. If something isn't clear, you have to understand this more, you misspoke here, make a note of it. So that this can really be a good dry run.
Trish, I'm just, one minute. I'm just gonna hold on a sec. Did you send the PowerPoint presentation to Alvaro on the Dropbox?
I, I, it's just the one that you guys sent to me.
Okay.
I, I didn't, it's fine, just use that one. I, I have, literally, the tweaks I made were tiny, and they were graphic. It wasn't, it wasn't like a substance tweak.
I'm just trying to-
Yeah, no, no, so just use the one that you guys sent me.
Okay, let me grab this stuff. I'm sorry, for everybody. Thank you for your patience. Let me jump back on that Dropbox.
Yeah, instead of brought my computer, if you-
No, I shouldn't. You know, Dropbox sometimes is not my friend. Compliance, Alvaro, the ever-adopted docs. I'm going to, I'm just gonna download and open.
Yeah, yeah, there it is.
Okay.
You want to put it on slideshow mode or whatever, just to make it bigger? Okay, so again, oh, I was looking to how it reads, this, obviously, the auditorium is much bigger. I don't know, like, how, what point size I can get and have it be readable. That's, there's no way for me to test it out, but anyway, okay. So-
Do you want this timed?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it won't be exactly the same. But so just to give a little history about, about the process of the MBTA, and this is part of what one of you guys had mentioned about having a little bit of history in it, that section three A, which is part of forty A of Mass General Law, was created as a part of another legislation to strengthen the state's economy in order to, in order to create multifamily housing near train stations to lessen the housing shortage. So that was done, it was signed into law in January of twenty twenty-one, after an anonymous vote in the Senate and a very high approval rate in the, in the House, and as a bipartisan effort. That was in twenty twenty-one. In December, a year later, we got draft guidelines were released to communities, and that was followed by a comment period where the states, or sorry, where the communities could provide feedback on those regulations. Final regulations were then released in August twenty twenty-two, that's a little over two years ago. The first part of that, for compliance, was to some, for communities to submit an action plan to the state. Peter, I think that date drawing, I think it's, I think Alvaro will go back to me, that was January twenty twenty-three.
It was submitted in January twenty twenty-three, you are correct. The state, the letter of compliance that came back to us is dated March of twenty-three.
Okay, okay.
So the letter of compliance from the state is March. We submitted it, I believe, it was January thirty-first.
So we were new, we were in compliance so far in March of twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
So that same fall, about six months later, the Ashland Select Board and the Planning Board formed a four-person working group that included town planner Peter Machek, assistant town planner Alvaro Esparza, select board member Joe Mignani, and myself, to start working on. Our mandate was to find a way that Ashland could be in compliance with, with the new MBTA communities law. So when the four-person working group met, we, oh, no, I'm jumping ahead here, because I don't know my slides. That might actually, that might mean I- I'm just checking something. Okay, I might change the order of my slides. But I'll go from where I am. But what I'm wondering if I, is I have a slide later on that talks about the working group, and I think that it actually might make more sense right after this, but I'll think about that. Do you think so? Yeah, because it says working group. All right, so, so keep, keep this where it is, Peter, but, oh, it doesn't matter. We'll put that slide ahead. So when the working group got together, the first thing we discussed is what was important to us as a group, what we thought would be important to Ashland. And the first thing we talked about is the comprehensive plan process. The comprehensive plan was fairly new and getting started at that time, and we wanted to make sure we respected that process. The town was putting a good deal of money into studying the future of Ashland, and a large group of people was involved in that process. So respecting the comprehensive plan process was important to us. The second thing we wanted to do is to reuse the housing and zoning we already have. Everyone in Ashland knows that we have been, we have been building housing here in Ashland. Not only Cirrus, but we have a development going up at a hundred Chestnut Street. We have another approved project at five oh one Pond Street, and there was a friendly forty-B that was planned for along Memorial Drive. So we have been looking very seriously at housing here in Ashland, and we wanted to reuse what we've already done. And the third thing, through those two things, is to minimize the overall impact to Ashland as much as we could. If there's changes in housing that's going to come out of, if Ashland is going to make changes in housing, we want those changes to come out of the comprehensive plan process, rather than the MBTA process or the working group. So those were our three considerations. Going back to what is the MBTA communities. First, we need to go through just a few important definitions that will help in our understanding of what the bylaw is that we're talking about tonight. First of all is zoning. Zoning is what the planning board does. Zoning is what this MBTA Communities Act requires. Zoning is about what uses are allowed in our town, in Ashland, and where those uses are allowed. So it's important to note that the MBTA Act is about zoning, it's not about building. This bylaw will create an overlay zoning district. This means when it's an overlay district, it's a zoning district laid on top of existing zoning that allows for new use options. So this will be zoning laid on top of all our other zoning that simply allows for this multifamily development and allows it to happen according to the new state regulations. A dwelling multifamily will come into play here, and that is a building containing three or more dwelling units. So we're required to create multifamily housing, sorry, to zone for multifamily housing. And as-of-right, these zoning units must be as-of-right. That means that the development can proceed without a special permit. It does mean, however, that developments still have to follow environmental regulations, the building code, and they still have to have a site plan review with the Ashland Planning Board. But it is a site plan review and not a special permit. So next slide is where the MBT communities are in Ashland. So it's important to understand that the MBTA communities apply not just to Ashland, obviously, but to all the communities shown on this slide. Depending on if your community has a subway stop, a commuter rail stop, or if you're just next to a community that has one of those, it will depend on how much housing and how much acreage that you need to zone for. So Ashland is characterized as a commuter rail community for obvious reasons, and our requirements are based on that designation. So again, it's important to note that the law, the MBTA Communities Law, requires the creation of a zoning district. It does not require the housing to be built. All right, next slide. So on this slide, we're showing, this is where I might get too small, I might have to make, I think I'm gonna have to make this bigger. So this slide is showing, first of all, in black, the, the requirements for the MBTA. First of all, we're gonna look at the number of acres. For our commuter rail community in Ashland, we need a zoning district that totals at least fifty acres, all right? Our proposal, as we will show you later, totals fifty-six point one-two acres, so just above that fifty-acre threshold. You can divide your acreage, it doesn't have to be all in one piece, you can divide it into sub-districts. We have divided our district into five sub-districts that are at least five acres each. So if you divide it into sub-districts, each of them has to be at least five acres. Half of our zoning district must be contiguous. This is another one of the rules. So if we have fifty-six point one-two acres, half of that has to be all in one piece, one chunk. So for us, we have fifty point three acres that are contiguous. That's kind of just over that threshold. Twenty-eight point two-six of our acres are contiguous. Another regulation is that forty percent of the acres have to be located within point five miles, a half a mile of the T station. We have, we do that very well. We have sixty-one point three percent of our acres within point five miles of the MBTA station. Next slide. The next category of regulations we have to deal with is the density. For all the districts that we create, the one district and the five sub-districts, they have to have each a minimum of fifteen housing units, fifteen dwelling units per acre. As we look at our five districts, they range from fifteen units per acre to thirty units an acre in density. We also have to create, through our zoning, a certain, we have to allow for a certain number of units to be built. So by taking acreage and timesing it by density, we understand how many units we need. For Ashland, we need to accommodate fifteen percent of our housing units from the twenty twenty census. That's the regulation as being, for being a commuter rail community. So our housing units as of twenty twenty was seven thousand four hundred and ninety-five. We take that times fifteen percent, and we get one thousand one hundred and twenty-four housing units that we need to zone for. Not to build, but to zone for. Right now, our proposal would allow for one thousand one hundred and forty-four units. Just, that's, that's just twenty units over what is the minimal that we can produce. Okay. Next slide, so which is, yeah, the working groups, I skipped that. So the proposal, our overlay district would consist of these five sub-districts shown in green, A, B, C, D, and E. And you can see the ones that, the, the MBTA circle is shown on the map. You can see the ones that are completely within that circle and the ones that lie with, outside of it. We're gonna be going through these one by ones that people understand where they are. You can also see the Memorial Drive A, that's Cirrus Apartments, that's our twenty-eight contiguous acres. So that's our, our biggest component of this. Each of the other components are five to seven acres in size. Next slide. So sub-district A, this is Cirrus Apartments along, at the end of Memorial Drive, past the Dunkin' Donuts, up over the hill, until you get to the, near the train station. So again, this is our largest component, it's twenty-eight point two-six acres. Its current density is zoned at fourteen units an acre. We are proposing the MBTA density to be twenty-one units an acre. Now, one of the reasons we're using this parcel, again, it's our, it's our largest parcel, and it's already built. So what this means, when we go back to one of our goals, is that we're trying to use the housing developments and the, the housing that we've already produced. This is housing- This is housing Ashland has already produced. So we can assign a larger density to that area without actually building anything on it. And though the property owners, if this is passed, though the property owners would have the right to add more housing there if they could, we find it very unlikely, and it would be very difficult, to add that housing there with the current housing already, already in place. So we're using, using that asset. Show the next slide. Sub District B, this is Pleasant Street. I might retake those photos because they're dark. This would stretch from Community, sorry, Connect Church through Burnham's Supper Club. This stretch of land is just 6.86 acres. Its current density does not go by units and eight, units an acre, but it goes by something called floor area ratio, or FAR, which is a two. By studying this very carefully, we have determined that a, that a floor area ratio of two actually allows a much greater density than the MBTA Communities would allow at 15. So it would be unlikely that a developer would follow MBTA density at 15, at 15 units an acre to build on these properties. If they did, they would use the current underlying density, the current underlying zoning, which is already more dense than the MBTA would allow. Next slide. So Sub District C is 10 to 60 Main Street. These are the mill buildings. As most of you probably know, there is a 40B project that is proposed for this site. That 40B project is proposed at a density of 36 units an acre. We are proposing the MBTA density at 15 units an acre. So again, this is a property that is very likely going to have housing on it of some kind, so we are trying to use it as our MBTA Communities, so we get kind of a double use out of it in a way. Next slide is Sub District D. This is Chestnut Street, Queen Isabella Way. This is the project that's currently in construction that you likely have driven by. The built density of this site is 28 units an acres, 28 units an acre. Again, it's still in construction. We proposed it at just slightly higher, at 30 units an acre, for the same reason. We feel we can add added density onto that, and it would be actually very, very unlikely that, that the builder would be actually, would want or be able to add that greater density with a project already this far along in construction. Next slide. And finally, Sub District E. This is 501 Pond Street. The district actually includes both 501 Pond Street, which is currently an empty lot, and the residence at Valley Farm, which is next door to it. So these two lots together, together give us 7.24 acres, because we have to have at least five. On 501 Pond Street, there is an approved project that had went through the planning board two years ago. It spent about a year in front of the planning board. It is 120 units of housing. That is a 25% affordable project, so all of them would count toward our affordable housing count with commercial and a kind of a public green space in the front of the building. So again, that is housing that we have already approved, and we want to make sure we use it in our MBTA Communities. So that is currently, looking at just 501, not Valley Farm. It is a density of 32 units an acre. However, the underlying zoning of Pond Street would only allow a density of about, of about 22 units an acre. So if that project does not get built, we wanted to set the density at what the zoning already allows, which is 22 units an acre, and not the 32 units an acre that it's currently, that it's currently proposed as a 25% affordable project. All right. Other details. Other details that we, in the MBTA zoning, that whatever project gets built or that has to be in the zoning is the kind of occupants. So for these, for these developments, there can be no age restrictions, and they're, the apartments need to be suitable for families with children, meaning that the town can't put restrictions on the number of bedrooms or the size of the unit. That has to be up, left up to the developer. The setbacks in height follow, besides what's actually written in the bylaw, which changes the density, it follows all the underlying zoning that's already in the Ashland bylaws. So if it's not listed in the bylaw, it's following what the underlying zoning is. That goes for all of the setbacks in height. I think the one exception to that is 100 Chestnut Street, where in 100 Chestnut Street, if you were building all residential, it would only be able to be three stories. Here, as that building is already built, and we feel it very unlikely that it will change, we have let it go to four stories in that location. The parking minimum is one space for studios and one space for one-bedroom apartments. Two or more bedrooms be 1.5 spaces, and those would not be able to be lessened in any way under the underlying zoning. Affordability, the affordable component of these projects would be a minimum of 10%. We are hoping to get that to 12.5% for most of the districts, probably everything except 501 Pond Street, but this depends on the, depends on state approval of the, of the bylaw. That's all I have. I need a conclusion.
I moved that slide already.
Oh, you did? I think it fits better there.
I think that's great.
What, what time, what time is it?
17 minutes, 35 seconds.
Oh, that sucks. Okay.
I did cut when there was talking.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
It was the words, the slides first.
No, I cut, I cut.
I have a, I mean, I have a couple of marketing tricks that I think will help you, or just ideas that might help you kind of shorten your point. So I think the strength of the presentation is you're starting out with the concept of the state had a purpose, and the purpose is to increase housing next to the MBTA. I think you need to start with sort of a premise. What is the state after? And I think you need to tell them at the beginning, the state's purpose is to add housing as close to MBTA stops as possible to make it easier for people to live in Massachusetts and commute and work and live, right? Like, that needs to be said at the very, that needs to be said at the very beginning.
Taking advantage of existing infrastructure.
That's right. The public needs, the public needs to hear from the very start of this presentation, why are we here? Because the state cares about having housing next to our MBTA infrastructure. That is the goal, right? And if you start there, then the public hears why we're doing this. That's important. And I would not, I would not, nobody, no offense, no one cares when that happened. All they care about is why is the state doing this to us? So you need to tell them that in a constructive way, because there's a positive intentionality. The legislature has a reason that is public interest oriented. I don't think anyone is going to care for you to say these things. They can just look.
So good to have them up there, but no need to say them.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea, because some people like.
The people really don't understand. They're like, why is the state requiring this?
You can tell the, you can tell the audience, you know, this, this history right there, if you want to read it, but why, why would they know this?
Okay.
Yep. And then I think your second slide has to be the working group consideration, but I would rethink the use, the, you used two words I would rethink. You, you used the word reuse, and you used the word double use. I would stay away from those. The reason I would stay away from those is they hint that it could be reused in some way, or they hint that we're trying to get some kind of advantage in double using it.
Got it.
I think a better term of use is recognition or credit, because Ashland has, Ashland has already done what the state wants. That needs to be said outright. We're trying to get credit for what we already did. You're giving the people a sense that, because their attitude, rightfully so as mine, is that Ashland has already done a lot. Why are we still doing it? Okay, well, we're, we are creating this in a way that you, Ashland, get credit for all of our hard work and development. And my last point, because if you start that way, if you start with those two points, is every single slide, you're doing a really good job to basically reinforce, look, we're getting credit. Look, we're getting recognition for what's already there. So this is just like a ploy, because you have a short amount of time. Think about little boxes at each corner and a little check mark, like a credit mark. Like, look, we get credit for something that's already there. And you're going to, some of you may be upset with me. The only box that's not going to get a little check mark, where there's nothing there yet that is of that size, is Pleasant Street, but this is important because the public needs to understand. This is, the rest of them, there's a little check mark. We already have a multifamily development that the state would be happy with. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I like the little check mark.
And the little check mark gets you there, because then you can shorten your presentation, because every slide, you were like, okay, see, we're already going to.
You don't want to put a check mark on Main Street.
Right, not on Main Street.
Sure. Well, hold on, Main Street, but, but the 40B is coming, so I think you can check.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's coming. I think so.
Yeah, it's coming, yeah.
It's a 40, otherwise, otherwise we wouldn't have used.
You don't want to check it off? Because essentially, it's been a.
I'm waiting for your marketing thing. Yeah, but that's like, it is a done deal, and I don't want to send a message of, I don't have to practice, just because someone said, the application can go forward, that's the state right.
So we could, okay, so forget my little check mark idea, because that gets too controversial.
Because we're saying that we checked because we're taking credit.
I, I took, I took the check mark, I mean, I get it. If it's too controversial, that's fine.
But you still, but we can still, we're going to get credit for this housing we already have.
Reinforce it that, I think.
To reinforce.
Yeah. Sure. I mean, I think for Main Street, you could, you could have a half check mark, a, a see-through check mark, in the sense that there's an application, and if that project ultimately is approved.
I agree with you, Anna, 110%, because, yes, it's a project, right? It was in front of us at 200 units, right? Now it's, we are minimize, we, we, we're zoning there for 15 units, well under what this.
Well, under what's being proposed.
Well, under what's being proposed, and well under what the planning board reviewed. And so whatever goes there is going to have housing at a minimum of 15 units per acre. So I see, I, I agree with Anna saying a half check mark, just to a recognition.
Like a little, like one of these little suckers.
Yes, a recognition.
And the whole idea is, there's an application that's pending.
Correct.
There's an application that's pending, that's under review, an application under review. You can tell the public, there's a check mark where there's either an approved application or an application under review.
We haven't?
We haven't? I thought the state did, essentially.
Yeah, well, he did. That's the one you rejected?
They have to, they have to.
They did. They did submit an application. Upon review, there was missing elements, so I rejected it.
Okay, but, but they are, it was in the process.
It's in the process.
I think, maybe, okay, how about we say, how about we, we say the word in, or we say.
We don't want to spread rumors, because it is not.
No, I, I'm not saying it's a done deal. I'm trying to give the public a visual that there's certain, certain districts here where there's either a permitted project approved or it's in progress. It's under review. Maybe the word under review is the right thing, so you could have a little see-through check mark. But I think the public needs that quick visual, because slides can be important in a visualization.
Do you make that also in a table, then?
I mean, I don't know, because you have one slide at a time. And, and I guess what I'm.
It's going to be big enough for the visible.
But do you see what I mean? Like a little.
Yeah, no, I.
I think this is the only one, and as controversial as Pleasant Street is, it's important to be transparent about the fact that that's the only one where it's a blank one for now. But the rest of them, we're getting credit. The rest of these districts, there's credit being done. So the public is coming into the presentation, understanding, why are we here? Because the state cares. Why does the state care about housing next to MBTA? And guess what, Ashland, you've done a great job already. Look at, look at the fact that these, these districts, you already are on your way. You've met the requirement. So whatever we're requiring of you to approve tonight, you basically already did. That, that's your presentation.
Yeah, I think with that, moving the timeline of the first slide, a little bit past that to the districts.
What about the, I mean, like, I, I feel like this is like the meat of it. I can't skip that, right?
I like that.
It needs to be a lot bigger.
A lot bigger, yeah.
I like that slide. I like that slide. I thought it was a very informative slide. But the rest of the slides, I, I think people are, laypeople are going to be glossy, glossed over a little bit, so there has to.
Are we making any of these as also a part?
We could, we could. I think we can.
Do they have to get home? Or just.
No, no, some people, I usually slide on to town, meaning some people get there early, and they can be.
Check it out.
Or if they can't read it on the, if they sit in back and can't read it.
Way in the back, no matter what you do is.
Can we do that? Like.
Yeah, you know, I think we can.
I don't think you need the whole slide, but those ones that have like.
Oh, yeah, maybe, like, like this one.
Yeah.
Well, if you miss pages, people will wonder what happened to the missing pages. So either you print the whole deck.
Or it could, it could be this in one page, though, the same information presented slightly different, like, with this slide, a lot of other details, like, if you.
Yeah, so those two things could be a part of this, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, yeah, so.
We can do a Q and A, and put obviously this and format it, and then have it double sheets, or you can print them one thing off, and it's one end, it's double sided, and then maybe slip that, you know, into the, to the booklets.
To the.
To the, you know, when you walk into town, meaning you get a warrant.
Yeah, but typically, there's, you get the warrant, and then there's other handouts that you can grab.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. But like, we can put, we can put the, just the purely information slides, these and the other requirement, the other.
And it can, it can be contained on one page. It doesn't have to look like the slide.
Yeah, and be stapled, stapled into this.
I, I just related to that, so A, thank you for all the effort, because I think it was a lot from several people who are doing it. The Select Board was supposedly doing some kind of thing, and it may have been this MBTA and 40B, but I said make sure they, that we're not duplicating.
That's this, this is from them, right?
Oh, that was from the Select Board.
Yeah, this is from the Select Board.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so again, I went through it, and.
Alvaro.
Yeah.
Alvaro worked on it.
Yeah.
But it's all.
Yeah, so it's a, it's by now a collaborative effort to make sure that.
I just wanted to make sure, because I found out, and I said, please, and they said they were going to get in touch with you.
Yeah, so that's what this is, so that, again, I don't really, really want to get, I'm sure questions will come up about, about 40B, but at least there'll be some information.
But also, if there's a question, maybe the title of the, of this thing?
Yeah, this gets confusing. You almost need to like gray out the 40B and just.
No, but I'm saying, quick comparison between MBTA and 40B. If I would just.
It's not, yeah.
How do I care about.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. MBTA Communities is not the same as 40B.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yep.
MBTA is not 40B.
It's not the same as 40B.
Yeah.
And then, oh, okay, now I understand why I'm comparing.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Because otherwise, that's kind of saying, vote for MBTA, not 40B.
Yeah, no, exactly. I don't want both.
Yeah, right, right, right. Okay, well, that was, does anyone, anyone else make any notes, or?
I mean, I don't think it's helpful to talk, but I did put some times where you ended them, but they were like, I'm looking at 11, so when you got to the, when you got to the section, the sub-districts, they, they went pretty quick. They were about to, like, 11, 11 minutes, 20 seconds to 12 minutes, 36, so like, they were about a minute.
I don't really need to, I don't really need to, I, I shouldn't say, like, I mean, I have it printed, the size of the acres. I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that, right? It's on the slide, how many acres each one is.
I would agree with that, and I think you can kind of summarize and say, I'm about to go through, how many.
The five sub-districts.
Five sub-districts, and I'm going to highlight a few, and just be aware that the majority of them, I think the majority, what we're approving is.
Actually, what you just referenced with what Anna said at the beginning, is like, we're going to go, I'm going to show you.
You're getting credit, yeah.
The five districts that were created with the objectives of taking credit for what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
The data is there, and I'm going to read the first one as an example, then you can get the others.
And click through.
Or you could go through all of them, but not point out everything.
I don't think you need to explain each one. I think you just need to summarize. I'm about to show you the five districts that meet these requirements.
Yeah.
You'll see a little corner check mark that will show you where we're getting credit for.
Yeah. Yeah, big.
And maybe focus on one as an example, like, I think a good one to show them might be.
Well, serious.
I think the serious would be a really good one, because serious is.
Serious is the key, so.
Yeah, that's the best example. I would almost go through, you know what I would do? I would go through A through E. Boom, 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 boom. Did you all see the check mark? Let me show you one of them. Let's go back to slide A and show you how this works. Use serious as an example. What do I mean by a little credit? Well, we built this thing and look, it's already there. What are the chances of somebody tearing it down? To build something of higher density, like, probably unlikely. Here we go. You know what I mean? Like, check mark. We get credit for it under this particular version. That will be, I mean, you don't have to do that way, but that way cuts your presentation down. They can still read every slide and get the point.
So there's no reason to under, there's no reason really to go and understand, hey, it's this under current zoning and now it's this? Like, it's, it's too much detail.
I mean, I think the slides are good, so.
I wouldn't change the slide.
I would change the slides, but.
Okay, okay.
I think it's very technical for what you're doing. Like, it's helpful for us, it's helpful for the select board. But the public's perspective is like, what in the world is this?
What's the bottom line?
And what's the bottom line of what I'm agreeing to? What in the world is it? It's housing, it's MBTA. But don't remove what you have in the slide.
Right, right.
It's helpful information. They should read it.
Right, okay.
If you use one slide to explain what it means, they can make the confusion about the rest.
Got it.
And actually, that's true, because if you start reading the slide every single time, you're gonna lose.
You're gonna lose their focus.
Yeah, I was getting bored with myself.
Just be like, and I would just literally copy slide A and make it right under E. So as you click through, you go A, B, C, D, E, and then you accidentally have to be back to A. Like, I'm gonna walk through my five slides and come back to this first one and use it as an example. Like, you don't have to go backwards.
I see what you're saying. Just double it up.
Double it up. So it's almost like you're making a point, like, state wants this, we got credit. I'm gonna show you the little slides with the credit mark. And then I'm back to that first slide to sort of educate you how to interpret it. Look at us, we get credit. We're done, like.
So I have, on the actual town meeting, I mean, related to this, like, there, I would be shocked if there's not lots of discussion, right? And that's what town meetings are for anyway. So that is, I mean, I guess it might be coming to the working group or might be at select board, but if someone doesn't say, I, I have a question for the planning board. How is, how is that going to be directed into who?
I assume it's gonna mostly come to me, because I'm gonna be standing, I'm gonna still, I'm not gonna be sitting down. I'm gonna be at the mic, ready to answer any questions. But there will be some, if anything comes up about a forty B, I'm letting, Michael or Peter will take it.
Myself, Michael and Lisa Mead. Lisa Mead will be here on Tuesday night. I'll be there close to the microphone. I'll probably be, I'll probably sit right next to Tricia.
And then, so.
And Michael will be there, too.
Are the good time to go back to, like, if people live next to one of these districts, then you go back to that slide.
Right, yeah.
And you can explain it more, rather than doing.
So, so, and I'm thinking, though, I, I'm just trying to make sure it goes as smoothly as possible. So like, when people came to the planning board last week, they said, so what about infrastructure? And, oh my God, it's in the paper right now about drought and please don't take as many showers. That really came out, okay? And what is this gonna do? And I.
Yeah, so those, that was one of the ones I took out of the, of the frequently asked questions. Because I'm like, this. Yeah.
No, no, I'm just trying to prepare you or how are they, who's fielding them, yeah.
That question would probably go to Michael, you know, where, but it, that's not my pur, that's not my purview, right? That's outside of my. Yeah.
That's the purview of the MBTA zoning, right?
No, no, I know. I'm just trying to ask the questions to be, like, so it goes smooth if, when. These questions will probably be asked. They were already asked once.
Yeah, so I don't know if Adam will direct it to back to me, but if he does, I'll be saying, that's not a question for me. Michael, can you take that question? Or, or Peter, can you take that question or?
Yeah, we, we did have quite a few like that, and that's what I, I.
With a few like that. I mean, maybe they were doubled up, but like I said, the, Anna had about fifteen questions that she wrote down and I, I mean, some of them I combined, but I want to say maybe there was three I took out that this just isn't.
Give those to Peter to review with Michael, because those are probably the ones that the public's gonna ask.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll review those with Michael.
You can look on the original thing that you did.
Yeah, no, I have the original item that I did and went through it and we can kind of go over it. And I'll mention it to Michael and I'm sure we'll meet on Monday and Tuesday, bleed it up for me.
Okay. Well, this is really helpful. Thank you.
Happy to help. I mean, if you have a limited amount of time.
I think, you know, you're turn, I think taking out reuse and putting in those two words, the credit.
Credit or recognition.
Yeah, and it is the public infrastructure. And that's what the whole, if you go back to the purpose of the MBTA law, you know, it's kind of like you gotta go back and get the direction from that.
Yeah, my brain is starting to fail.
Oh.
And I've had a migraine this whole meeting, so.
I think all we have is meeting minutes. I don't, I don't think we need to do anything else tonight, as far as I know.
I just want to give you a, before the meeting wraps up, we did get an application for cell tower updates, antenna updates at four hundred Cedar Street, just to give everyone the heads up on that. I think everyone's been through those before. And. So that was a, we did that for a different company. Yeah, we moved one off the top to the side. Now this is just a replacement of antennas that are on the side with new antennas. Yeah, it's. You guys know the drill. Just give everyone the heads up.
Okay, so first meeting minutes is from September eighteenth.
So this is.
Oh, this was the joint meeting.
This is a joint meeting that the planning board had with the select board. And it was for the, excuse me, it was for the Golson doing the comp plan presentation to the select board. So it was a Wednesday night, I believe. But I think some of, I think some and or most joined via Zoom. But it was at the select board meeting. Okay.
I was out or somewhere and I couldn't.
I think, I know.
Double check.
I'll double check. I know.
You're reading it and you're like, oh, I'm not.
I know Deepa was on. Okay. This was a, um, this was a week I remember there was a lot of night meetings, because I remember that the following Thursday, we had a comp plan meeting.
I know, it sounds like you motioned to adjourn.
I did?
That's what it says.
I'll double check, I'll double check it. It was a meeting on their meeting.
Remember?
Oh, the one that I was there and you, oh, that one?
It seems like it's stuck. It doesn't feel like you were there, but.
You, I wish I wasn't there.
I'll check, check, check the film. But you were sitting.
Powerful experience.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, never mind.
I was saying, then the other one, just so we can do them both at the same time, the October twenty-fourth is, that's the public hearing, right?
Correct.
I was not at.
Correct.
Yeah, that is the public hearing, so.
Or watched, whatever.
Yes.
On page two of that one, line forty-six, you might want to just, that equal sign is.
Oh, I'll take care of that.
It was funny watching the video and you guys are like, oh my God, there's all these people here. You got, you're all like.
I just, I just was so unprepared. I just figured, oh, there'll be the same three people here and, you know.
It's all right. Could have been worse.
Well, you know, I saw these people.
It's funny watching a video and you're like.
I saw people in the, I saw people in the parking lot and I was thinking to myself, oh, I wonder if there's some kind of an event tonight that people are going to. They were all coming. They were all coming into planning board.
Come on in. Well, these people jumped on the Zoom meeting. I'm sitting here like, whoa, what is going on right now?
We were a little naive, yeah.
I'm putting up the fences. Oh, man, good times.
Okay, so.
Ready? I should make a motion on that.
Yeah, I'm ready.
I make a motion that we approve the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes and the October twenty, twenty-four minutes with the small edit on the October twenty twenty-four minutes.
I'll second it.
Anna will call vote?
Deepa Wangitai.
Anna Tasmansky, aye.
Marcelo Rona, aye.
Catherine Jurzak, aye.
Antrisha Kendall, aye. Very efficient. Do we need to do anything else?
We need to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Anna Tasmansky, aye.
Marcelo Rona, aye.
Catherine Jurzak, aye.
Antrisha Kendall, aye. Let's get out of here.
Oh, it's moving head. Uh, yeah, it's moving head. I know, I have no. I think they were trying to.